And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like permission to move an item from Town Administrator Updates to the top of the agenda for an important announcement by the Board of Health and the Director of Health from Town of Yarmouth.
All right, is that fine?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll have our update from the Board of Health, the Chair and the Director, both present.
Thank you, Sleckman, residents at home. My name is Bruce Murphy. I'm the Director of Health for the town. With me is Chairman Dr. Hillid Bosky, Eric Winston, Charles Holloway and Deborah Brunidge. Also Kevin Hawk is in, the Housing Inspector is in the room with us that worked on the PowerPoint and was out doing inspections for us today. So today, just, we have been working, the last several weeks, on the COVID-19 virus outbreak. We've been preparing what our positions would be for the Board of Health and the, through the Health Department over the last several weeks, and we have given an updates at the Board of Health meeting, and we've also been out into the public and working with the Chamber of Commerce and so forth. So tonight, I'd like to give an overview of where we sit for yourselves and the public. Let's see, there we go. The coronavirus, probably everybody's seen this picture, that's pretty well-known. But that's what it looks like. What we're looking at is case versus time is what you see up there. Without protective measures, you can see it really skyrockets way up until it drops off. What we're trying to do is suppress, suppress the increase by taking protections, actions. That's the, the most important thing the town needs to do. So what's the most way that the, the virus is spread? It's person to person and mainly through sneezing. So that's why it's important to cover your, cover your mouth when you're sneezing, use your arm and so forth. That's the number one way the virus is spread from person to person. Ways that we can prevent the spread is continually washing your hands. As I mentioned, cover your mouth, use your arm, avoid touching your eyes and nose, and stay at home to avoid contact and other close contacts. Question and answers, I want to go over some, the question and answers right here. What is the coronavirus? It's a newly identified virus that has developed into a pandemic around the world. How does the virus spread? Primarily between contact between each person, mainly through respiratory droplets produced when infected person coughs or sneezes. Symptoms, current symptoms reported for patients with the virus have included mild to severe respiratory illness, fever, cold and difficulty breathing. What should I do if I develop the symptoms? You need to call your healthcare provider or the Mass Department of Public Health hotline at 211 extension 26. But you need to call your health provider, just do not go to the hospital, do not go to your, the doctor's office. You need to make a call first. They will do screening and determine what the next step would be. Is there a treatment? There is no Pacific anti-vial treatment right now. Again, people should talk to their doctors and seek medical review. Should, should I be tested? That's what everybody's hearing, that's the highest thing in the news. Again, call your healthcare provider, they will work on doing an assessment if you need to be tested. They will ask for a history, have you traveled, do you have a fever? Have you been with another known contact? They will determine whether a test would be made at this point in time. The hospital now is staffing up for additional testing. I believe they're working with the Cape Cod Community College on a drive-in test site. So this will be something that will be increasing more as the virus spreads this direction. And in fact, it will get worse before it gets better. And that's probably going to be over the next several weeks, if not several months. So testing will be increased. Is there a vaccine? There is currently no, no vaccine at this time to prevent the inspection, to prevent the infection. How can I protect myself? Frequently washing hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Sneezing, coughing into your, using your elbow and nose is the best thing to do. Soap and water, try to do a hand sanitizer, at least 60% alcohol. Do not touch and, touch your face or eyes during this, this period of time. And importantly, stay home will reduce your risk to becoming sick. Social distancing, that's the new word that we're probably heard over the last couple of weeks, is making sure you're maintaining a safe distance of at least six, six feet between you and another person. So check yourself, don't lean back too far, shed, spread your chairs a little bit, that you'll be all right. But I think social distancing, distancing is so important for the public to understand when they go out. You know, don't get together when they go to certain places, and that was, that's what we're seeing is, you know, a nice day like today and what we saw is people just getting together over the weekend and just going to the parks and everybody was just taking it like a vacation day. And we're real close to each other and just playing and everything. They need to, you need to have a social distancing and you really should be staying at home. Go back one. What should I do if someone in my household is quarantined? All, all contacts within the household should be monitoring their, their own health, checking for temperatures and staying in touch with their healthcare provider. If they are a infected person under quarantine, the Health Department will be checking with them twice a day during the quarantine 14-day period. So that will be a thing the office does. Be monitoring, will be touch base with our VNA and our Medical Reserve Corps if needed. I've been in touch, we've already met with our VNA also, so we're up to date on that. They've, again, talked to them tonight. Last week, I was in constant contact with our school nurse on questions that had developed during the school on potential travel with some students or teachers. So we've been in constant contact with the, the schools and the school nurse. And what about pets? As of now, there's really no spread from any reports of pets becoming ill. Here we go, here we go. Again, just as a highlight, to wash the hands thoroughly, limit food sharing, don't share your food with others and distance yourself. Social distancing, six feet is important, stop the handshake, and I think that's coming in. Use other non-contact greetings. Clean hands at the door and schedule regular hand washing. I think steps at home sanitizing your home is important. Door handles, light switches, TV switches, clickers and so forth. If you're feeling sick, stay at home, that, we can't stress that enough. A lot of people just go to work and they say, oh, I just think I got the sniffles, I'm not quite sure, I don't quite feel good this morning, and they go to work. They need to stay at home. We're stressing this also with the, the restaurant workers and so forth. We've reached out to the restaurants as, as we're aware that they're, as of tomorrow, they're going to be closed unless it's takeout. We've been in contact with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure all the restaurants understood this. We've also, we're reached out by the Restaurant Association, contacted us, that if they could be in any assistance that's going through this to make sure that the word was out. So we're in touch with them. We've been in touch with several restaurants and motels and bed and breakfasts and so forth, so we have reached out to areas in town. Washing hands, social distancing, if, if sick, stay at home. We just can't keep repeating that enough, it's, it's so important. Actions taken by the Board of Health. Things have changed since Friday and the Board has met with the Chairman and myself. The Board has looked, looked at this and as, as of now, the Board's position is town buildings are closed to the public. All recreation activities are closed. Golf, pickleball courts, tennis courts, youth activities, basketball courts, parks and beaches. Again, trying to keep social distancing, keeping people away. The important thing is not having people together to stop the spread. The spread is coming, the only way to do it is to stay home. Senior Center is closed, all town libraries are closed. Town water turn-ons are suspended at this time. Landfill and recycle facility Scale House has been suspended. This does not include the trash recycle drop-off recycle area. People can still go to the landfill with their trash and recycle areas. Meetings, hearings, committee meetings are all postponed after tonight until April 7th. The Board of Health will be reassessing all these activities above, what's happening with the virus, what's the position of the Department of Public Health during this time period. The areas that are suspended, the Board will be watching if there's anything can be done, especially at the landfill. We're trying to see if the Scale could open with possibly a non-contact with the person coming in in the Scale House. And same with the, the turn-ons. Again, we're trying to not get staff out or encouraging people to gather. So we're trying to see if there's any way on that. We've been in touch with police and, police and fire departments. They also have their own health safety procedures that they follow. Again, if somebody's sick, obviously call your own healthcare provider. If it's a respiratory and they're having trouble breathing, yes, call 911. The fire department will respond and will be asking questions also. The, within the Health Department, we've, we've suspended at this time housing inspections, going in people's houses and asking inspections. The last week or so, we had asked people, was everybody healthy in your house? And that was kind of a, a good question to ask, and it was, well, I'm healthy now. And that kind of led to question, well, who else is in your house or who's coming when we're here? So we're going to be monitoring that closely right now. We still will be doing, the Board of Health will still be doing, responding to complaints as prioritized and we'll be out doing septic inspections. Obviously, we have contractors still working, septic systems that need to be repaired, so we will be out doing those type of inspections right now. We have been calling around to motels and pools and just making sure they have restaurants, that they understand where their areas that they need not to have open to the public if they're a restaurant. Some of them have a quick continental breakfast, so it would be just pick it up and go, but just don't sit there and socialize, you know, next to the pool or, or the coffeehouse area. So we've been in touch with those people today also. Remember, social distancing is vital to slowing down the virus and saving lives. You must do your part by staying home. And I think with that, I will, additional information is provided on this rapidly changing emerging public health on the town website will be kept up to date as, I've been working with Dan very closely to keep things up on the town website. But people can also check with CDC, Mass Department of Public Health and the Massachusetts hotline at 211 extension 26. If, this is constantly changing from the governor last night to there could be additional news releases also coming out. So with that, I'd like to just turn it over to the Chairman for some, some points.
Good evening. This situation is getting, getting worse by the hour, by the day. We're going to be seeing more individuals who are sick, more hospitalizations and more deaths. And that's what's happening across the country and really across the world. I think the most important thing we can do here is make sure the public understands how dire this is. And we need to make a lot more progress on that line. I don't think everyone realizes what's happening and to a degree, it's happening, how quickly it's happening. It's going to change everyone's life in this town. I think that ideally, people are not close to each other. It comes down to the social distancing we've been hearing on the news and what Bruce has been mentioning. If you read the CDC, they talk about a maximum or a minimum of six feet from each other. And that was really based upon respiratory droplets that come out when we sneeze or cough. And that's what carries the virus. And primarily, the virus goes through your nose, through your mouth. And that's how it's transmitted. You can also pick up the virus off the surface where often the virus will stay alive for three days. Makes it very, very difficult. From my perspective, I, I think personal hygiene is one of the most important things that we all can, can work on. And that really, washing with soap and water is sufficient. 20 seconds is sort of the, the time we, we aim for, and you realize rarely do most of us do that. Take a full 20 seconds and getting the fingers, getting the whole hands done correctly. It's nice if soap and water is not available, you can use some sanitizers, they're tough to come by. That's why I think we need to rely on soap and water. You know, if you do have the sanitizer, it's good to have it by the front door when you come in, it's a reminder. If you can avoid bringing viruses into your home, that's what you're trying to do. Bruce has mentioned staying home, and I think that's key. I mean, ideally, we'd only have people going out to get food, if they needed medical assistance, and to the pharmacy. And people should be home. I mean, it should look like a ghost town, and that's happening. There are cities now that have curfews, that's what's going on. I, I just, if, if there's anything you can think of, please pass it on to Bruce, the things that we need to incorporate. But life is going to change and unfortunately, it's getting worse. And it's just starting here in town, in fact. We're open for questions?
If I may, just add something to this. So to let everybody know, you know, I went back in the timeline a little bit. Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency had been sending out advisories for quite some number of weeks in advance of this. And I think as, as, you know, as Americans, you're like, ah, it's occurring in some other foreign world, it's not going to get here necessarily. And so as things ramped up and we ended up getting some cases, the Biogen Conference in Boston and then the case out in Washington State, more of us in government started to tune in. And then the, the communication with MEMA stepped, took a step upwards. And in last Monday, we had a, we had a staff meeting here and we talked about, you know, the present situation. There were no cases in the county at the time. We didn't know if there would be, but it was logical to think that there would be. So we talked about having a develop, or developing a phased approach to, to addressing this and doing our part based on what we were hearing from the powers that be. So as the week progressed, there was a conference call with school officials and the governor as late as 8:30 in the morning on Friday. And in that call, the message that was sent to school officials was along the lines of, well, you know, the, the state's not ordering any schools to close, use evidence-based decision-making to guide you. And that comes down to, well, if you have somebody with symptoms, you know, address it on a classroom by school basis, not necessarily just close to close. So we had a staff meeting here at 10:30 with the Board Chairman and Director Murphy, and we talked about what our position would be for the foreseeable future, and I sent you a correspondence related to that. Later, as the day progressed, I was made aware of another conference call that took place. And there was some information amongst school officials that was a little bit, I would say, more advanced knowledge than anybody else knew. And I think if you read the paper today, you'll know a little bit more about the scenario. That led one of the districts to, to do a closure, and that was Barnstable. So shortly after four o'clock, I was notified that Barnstable did a closure and then there was a couple of other schools, districts that did. And DY had a meeting scheduled for that evening at five o'clock. And the plan at going into that meeting was potentially a Monday closure. You know, take a step, you know, be consistent with the governor's messaging that was coming out, you know, evidence-based decision-making. And then that all changed and DY made a decision to go for the week. So then as, you know, again, we, we closed the book on Friday. We sent some emails out to staff, told them what our situation was. And things were, you know, going to be a little bit different, but not that different. Saturday at noon time, the governor's on TV talking about same thing, evidence-based decision-making. You know, try to stay at home, do those types of things. And then by like five o'clock yesterday, everything changed. I have never seen in all the years that I've been working, any response go from, you know, a rather soothing evidence-based decision-making to now we're going to close stores, we're going to close all the schools in the state. And then the governor had been very adamant about not wanting to do that for a long time, but do all of them for three weeks. And that put our team on high alert. We had worked most of Sunday, talking a little bit about what was going around us with libraries and senior centers and, you know, we were kind of gearing up for, you know, there was going to be some changes and some, probably some public closures. And then that happened. And, and then when we convened with the Chairman and Director Murphy on Sunday, they agreed that everything changed based on our situational report at that time. So Monday, we came in, and what I'd like you to be apprised of, we spent quite a bit of time today, and I know it took up a lot of the Chairman's time and Bruce's time, to work with the staff on these interactions with the public. How can we do it safely, if we can do it at all? And one of the things that we should be mindful of is police and fire departments have a pretty advanced protocol right now on the books. They've been trained on it, they are trained to wear personal protective equipment. Our workers aren't, our employees aren't generally. So one of the things when we talked about, like the Scale House came to attention, and we looked at what would be the interaction with the public. Well, there's two things there. If we're going to ask the public to have close contact with our staff, how do we protect our staff? And then secondly, what if the staff member doesn't want to do that necessarily? Because of the situation, and I can't necessarily order somebody to do that. So we spent an awful lot of time working on that. And I, the approach that we've taken is on a day-by-day timeline, things change. There are many people that believe it's going to get worse before it gets better. But we want to be able to be flexible enough to say that we'll evaluate things as we go along. If we can find a way to do something safely without putting the public or our staff at risk, then we will. But one of the problems that you have is, like what's played out in the paper today, you had one staff member of the school district next door and she ends up testing positive, the husband tests positive, and now all of those people that came in contact with that person. We have an incredibly mobile population in town. And we don't know where anybody's been or what their present status is before, they might be symptomatic. So we talked an awful lot about doing our part, modeling the behaviors that the epidemiologists and the doctors have told us, which is the only way to break this cycle, is to stay home and stay away from people. And so that's why with the support of the Board, we went in the direction we did. I'd rather make a mistake or error on the side of caution on this topic. Our population is the, you know, the second oldest in the country. I'm acutely aware of that. Every day we interact with the public and I, and I talked to three or four people who were locked out today because they couldn't come in and they were all understanding of what's going on. They know what's happening and we just need to reinforce that. And one of the communications over the weekend was with the school superintendent, who after sending out two notices to their population, was disheartened to see, you know, dozens of kids not at home or park because the parents think it's a day off. It's not, this is serious business and the only way we're going to level that curve out is to make sure people aren't in contact with other people. And we won't know if we're successful for a few weeks. But if we're not, we know, to the Chairman's point, it's going to get a lot worse. So that's where we're at right now, presently situated. And I could not believe, like I said, how fast it went from what we thought was a good planned Friday to where we were today. It's, it's tremendous, it's an unwritten book for all of us.
Director and I were notified today that we, in Yarmouth, we do have what's called a PUI, Person Under Investigation, which means they expect the patient will have a positive test.
I do have a question with regard to if somebody in your household is infected. What are the recommendations for that individual and for the rest of the family members? And how long, let's say they, they are not symptomatic after seven days, is the virus contagious after that?
Good questions. Ideally, the person who's asymptomatic at home would maintain the same six feet of separation. Unfortunately, it comes down to that and not sharing food. It means constantly cleaning your hands, and that's for the person who's sick as well as everyone else in the household to do the same. The people at home are at a high risk and there's a good chance they'll get infected. It's very hard to, to keep this virus away from us ourselves, it's everywhere. The timetable is a little bit more complicated. I don't think it's written in stone at this point. Initially, the CD was, CDC was establishing that it's 14 days of quarantine time and you needed to have two negative tests separated by 24 hours. It's complicated. I encourage people not to make their own medical decisions. And so being in touch with their health provider and by calling the hotline with the state is the best I think we can suggest they do at this point.
Great, thank you.
Answers your question?
I think so, yep.
I have a question related to some of the comments that you made. First of all, I know this has been an enormous task and it's a fluid situation. The time and effort that you all have put into it, Dan and Dr. Bosky, I think, and the entire Board of Health is commendable. It's just nice to know that our, our residents should feel very secure that we have top-notch people that are working on this. Well, whether they hear about every detail or not, there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes to understand, educate and do the best we can. I think that, that's extremely important. A couple of things that Dan mentioned, one being the elderly population and medically fragile. However, I know that I mentioned it to Dan the other day about the school district doing a great job, being able to feed the students, and I think that's a wonderful thing. But I think we also need to be cognizant of our elderly and medically fragile. The last thing that we want is them having to be in the grocery store. I know some supermarkets are making times for them to come, but honestly, staying home, as you've mentioned, is the best thing. So I'm wondering if there's any, I know there's Meals on Wheels and the elderly services of Cape Cod, but if there's anything more that we as a town can do to make sure that they get the, the things that they need during this time. I mean, there, there is a lot of people out there that are afraid, they don't want to go out. So to the extent that we're able to help that, I think that, you know, we should do all that we can as a community to do that because there's a lot of really, really great people out there. And, you know, as, as awful as this is, usually this is when people shine, you know, taking care of your neighbors, so.
If I could, Diane Kane and her team at Council on Aging has a list of over 200 people that are on the seniors of critical concern and they're reaching out to them. And also, the Meals on Wheels program is continuing to move forward. And if anybody is in need of assistance, they can call and we will help them, there's no question.
Where would they call, Dan?
They would call the, the senior center or email directly and we will, we will assist them if they call. We'll post the number up on the screen.
Okay.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We reached out to the, the Meals on Wheels program today. One of our food service inspector met with the person up there. They're doing rough around 110 meals per day now. They are able to gear up if, if necessary in increments or how they're going to go. So that's something that they can do, they're looking for that.
I know they were looking for drivers as well.
They're looking for drivers, they have four to six drivers now that, that cover it. We're using the drivers at the senior, the, do the buses, they're going to have those three drivers over there. We might have to use our medical corps revivers or staff availability from another section or division in town or department that might be available to drive. One of their drivers was 94 years old and his wife said time to, he should slow down for this period of time. So we do have driving covered for now and the Police Department has helped in the past and they said they were available if needed, so we're ready for that. We also both met with the School Department today over at the Administration Building that you're aware of, that the school is providing lunches. And that's been out to the public, so that's great that they're going to be able to, the kids will be able to go to the school and they go, they can go to any school in Dennis or Yarmouth and get a free lunch. So they're, we met with their food service person and their assistant superintendent. So they're, they're up and running on that, so that looks like that will work out very well. They have staffing, their food is, is available, they have the gloves and the bags and everything. So that will work out fine. The elderly, we will work on as we reach out to the 200 people. If the seniors have a question, if we need to assist them to... people. If the seniors have a question, if we need to assist them to, to help with Meals on Wheels, we will. Because the seniors also run a brown bag, similar food pantry. They run up there once a month also for the seniors to come in besides our local food pantry. So we'll be working closely with them to see how we may have to rearrange food distribution.
Yeah, once a month in this time may not be enough.
Correct.
But even, even in an extension to that, you know, essential needs other than food, whatever it may be, soap, whatever, it would just be nice to have some plan in place to be able to make sure that they're able to stay at home. My second point is, I guess I'm concerned also with staff. I mean, it's, I'm happy that the interaction with the public generally is limited. However, even staff to staff, you know, it's, it's got to be nerve-wracking for some of them. One of them may not take it serious and is out interacting with 50 other people and then they're there the next day. To what extent have we allowed working from home or do we have a plan that we can even limit staff?
So today, we sent a message out to the employees that if they would like to take paid time off for the period to let their supervisor know. Additionally, we asked that the department heads send to us a list of critical activities that need to be done by employees that need remote access. So we're addressing that. We do have some interesting language in one of our, in two of our collective bargaining agreements that we're working through in the next 48 hours. So we'll try to get to an agreement with them on that situation. But, but even for those employees that don't have enough accrued time, we would credit them advanced time in, in, in the aspect that they, if they feel safer at home. That all being said, we've stepped up the cleaning and disinfection regimen in town buildings. So we would hope that the extent possible that we're as clean as we can be, that coupled with people having the freedom of choice to, to use time off to go home, that will strike that balance that we need to conduct business and also take care of people's concerns. You know, there is still a lot of activity that the town generates that has to be attended to. So we're just getting our arms around who can do that at home, say, if we have to go that road. So right now, there isn't a public buildings closure where everybody's got to vacate. So we're using this time now to prepare if that does come.
Well, as we see, it's, it's changing every day and as we learn there's more infections, I think that, you know, it will come to that. And as you said, all of us are going to be affected in some manner. But, you know, honestly, it's, I think having a shorter term of a couple of weeks disruption is much smarter than what I think is going to happen is a very prolonged thing because people aren't heeding the advice and people are going to go out and it's going to be two more weeks and two more weeks. And before you know it, we're three months down the road. If we had all just bunkered down for a couple of weeks, this would pass. So again, I just thank you for all you do. I just ask that as this continues, that we communicate to the public as much as we can so that they're not nervous, that they know that there's a plan and what that they, they should do. I think that that's extremely important. So, thank you.
We put a lot of information on the website. It's getting better, the town website. And there'll be a call, right, Dan?
Yep. It's, it's going to be worked on as soon as the meeting's over and it'll be on its way to the public. So.
We also, Kevin, visited the two health clubs in town today and White's Path, up on White's Path, the tennis ones, they're planning to close and tomorrow, yes. And Planet Fitness, looks like they'll be closing also. They were monitoring their number of people in.
I think they closed today.
And they were planning to close when we visited them this afternoon also. So we've been out in the community trying to, trying to reach that also.
Okay. One comment I'd like to make is so the public understands the reason they didn't get so-called advance notice of a lot of these restrictions and regulations is because they really didn't materialize until Friday and then work over the weekend and work today. But going forward, we'll make sure that we'll carry this coronavirus issue as an agenda item from meeting to meeting and we'll put it on the agenda early on in any updates or the advisories or things of that effect. The public will be hearing it more at a contemporaneous level. So we'll do that, working with you and with the administration.
Great.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stay well.
Let's see, Jamie Veer over there. Are you appearing on these manager changes?
Yes, sir.
We have three of them. The Blue Rock Club Inc., Blue Water Limited Partnership, and Riviera Limited Partnership.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jamie Veer, Vice President of the Davenport Companies. In advance, Mr. Chairman and members, I was advised earlier today by the licensing agent that given the concern to limit public participation and to have minimizing people to come in, it was suggested that one representative on behalf of the company appear here today and that the three people who are the applicants, so to speak, did not need to attend. And they appreciated that personally. So I, not that they were afraid of coming to the meeting for getting grilled, but in fact, just staying away and heeding the advice of the professionals to stay home essentially. So.
We appreciate that.
With that, just to point out, we have three changes. This is precipitated primarily by the fact that for the Riviera Beach Club and Blue Water, the manager on those licenses was the same person. That individual is no longer with the company. So therefore, a change needed to be made. So essentially, we have an application to new manager for the Blue Rock Golf Course. Her criteria and her credentials are listed in the materials. Blue Water, the gentleman referenced there, was approved by this board last year as the manager at Blue Rock. We had to make some changes around. And then similarly, we have a new candidate, our new general manager at Riviera Beach Club. Their credentials are there. I will point out one other thing. The two individuals, one for Blue Rock, Blue Rock, and one for Riviera, have yet to meet with Officer Magnuson. I've put a couple of calls into him. I know they're real busy dealing with other things and eventually we will get them scheduled. But I was also informed that this board would in fact take up the applications, knowing that we will get them to that class. Mr. Allen for Blue Rock doesn't need it. He took it last year. So I will continue my efforts to get the two of them to take the necessary class with Officer Magnuson. I know it's a requirement and we will get it done.
Yeah, in fact, that, those dates haven't been scheduled yet. He usually does two, two of the full classes as opposed to the sit-down with new managers. And I believe he generally schedules those in May. I got an email from the licensing clerk, in fact, within the last week, asking him if he had dates because several of the establishments were asking when those classes were going to be offered. So you'll be hearing soon on that.
Perfect. Great. And two of them need to take it. So they will.
Mr. Chairman, given the circumstances and the fact that none of the managers can actually be in front of us tonight, I reviewed all of the materials and I make a recommendation, but I'll make the motion that we approve all three change of manager applications for the Blue Rock Club Inc., Blue Water Limited Partnership, and the Riviera Limited Partnership.
Second, motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be well.
You too. Okay, now we have the Cape Tech Regional Technical High School Budget Review.
I've asked Superintendent Sam Borden to join us tonight. There's a lot of good news to report on up in the Cape Tech universe and I know when I scheduled, now we'd be in the situation that we're in. But I have seen this presentation. It's, it's good and I wanted to bring him to you so that you could hear from him about things are progressing and also the review of the budget.
Good evening.
Tough to follow that. This picture was taken before the ban on large gatherings. That's some of our legislators and our school committee members as they toured the facility in January. Yeah, just a little update on the building, if I could. We are ahead of schedule. We're looking to get in in June if recent events don't slow that down, which is, which is a distinct possibility. We are under budget as we speak right now. You may have read the news when we came, got the bids. We were under 12 million in construction, of which six goes back to the MSBA. So the rest is sitting in our contingency right now. Our change orders are in very good shape so far with regard as an overall percentage of the overall budget. When we went around for the vote, it was about $128 million project. We're, we're trending in the $122 million range for the entire project as we speak. That's all-inclusive of professional services as well as construction. So, you know, so far, so good. So I'm going to go right into my presentation on the FY21 budget. So the work starts in April with our department heads and my business administrator, Aaron Orkut. And, and then the work is passed on and presented in October for a first review by our finance subcommittee. You see that Yarmouth is represented by Norm Michaux on that committee and the rest of the members there. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Eric Tully and Nathan Ladley, who sit on our school building committee, Norm Michaux, and also Chris Greeley, who wanted to be here this evening, but we know why she isn't. She, I'm sure she's watching. Hi, Chris. And then also, I want to thank especially Dan Nappick, who sat on our negotiations subcommittee, who was an invaluable resource for that subcommittee. So I guess maybe three or four years now, I've come with some bad news on the, on the part of Cape Cod Tech that our enrollment was down, which would give some short-term financial benefit. I can't say that tonight for the FY21 budget. We're up 46 students from FY20 and a large, the largest portion of that 46 students is from the town of Yarmouth, where we went from 110 students to 137. So not only is the situation that you're 22% of the overall population, as you see there, Barnstable's 31, but you were 18.7% last year. So the double, the reason for the increase, which I'll talk about, is twofold. It's the enrollment increase, but then you're also a larger percentage of our overall enrollment as well. So you see the breakdown as it goes from Barnstable to Yarmouth and then down to, it looks like Harwich would be next, or Dennis, excuse me. So over the last few years, you see that downward trend until this past year. And if you go to the bottom, you'll see that Yarmouth going from, well, you used to be 22% back in FY17 and that was pretty steady through 18, but then declined for the last two years. And now you're back up to 22% of the overall enrollment. So the budget I'm presenting is 2.76% increase over FY20, FY20 spending. I hope that you feel as though we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money over the last several years. The only time we exceeded 2% was in FY16. And you'll recall, that's when we asked for $250,000 from the 12 towns for our stabilization fund, which helped to fund our feasibility study for the building project. But we've had negatives and we've been below 2% until the budget I'm presenting this evening at 2.76, which is about a little over 15 and a half million dollars for FY21. It's the same story now. You read, there was a generational shift in educational funding called the Student Opportunity Act. So it didn't make it over the bridge for Cape Cod Tech. Chapter 70 is up $27,000 from last year. So once again, the major source of revenue for our budget is, is assessments. The Student Opportunity Act, its main target and beneficiaries were the gateway cities, which quite frankly need it to, to close significant achievement gaps. But, you know, the Cape has always, never been a winner in the Chapter 70 funding formula. And even with an influx of a lot of capital or money, it really didn't come to Cape Cod Tech. One thing, one thing that did happen in the formula this year that might be a harbinger of a little bit more money in the future is we're no longer held harmless. You've, you're all familiar with hold harmless. You get, you at least get what you got the previous year. What they gave us this year is what we quote-unquote earned after the formula was computed. So for years now, it's been, you get, we got what we had the previous year plus whatever they were given that year, $30 a student, $25 a student. So as they phase in the Student Opportunity Act, we may benefit more because we do have some populations economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities that did get more emphasis. Also, health insurance, which is true for everyone, they got more emphasis in the new funding formula. But it remains to be seen because it's a seven-year phase in and I would imagine we're going to be worried about revenue come this time next year. So the assessments are funding the budget. The 12 towns assessments are what are funding the majority of the budget. And you'll see the operating budget going up, the percentages that I told you before, and the assessments kind of follow that. One thing that we are doing, if I could go back to the previous slide, the $340,000 in local revenue. 250 of that is our excess and deficiency fund. We are at the maximum of 5%. Actually, we defrayed the cost of assessments last year by a small amount and I, I anticipate that we will probably be doing that again. So we have upped our local contribution through E and D, which is at 250,000 in the budget presenting, presented tonight. This is just a trend of the operating budgets, really the numbers behind the chart you just saw. And you see the local revenue going up by about $50,000 this year. So what is the money used for? It's a people business and the most important people in our building after the students are the teachers in front of them. And 35% of our budget is teacher's salaries. And then you go down and you see the next is, we've got plant and operations and insurance benefits right behind. I do want to call attention to retirement because we have about 8% of that budget is for people who no longer work, work in our school through the assessment to the Barnstable County Retirement Association, which is reflected by the 3% retirement slice of that pie. And then 5% retiree benefits, which I think you all know is primarily the cost of health insurance for retirees. And I, I would like to take the opportunity to tell you what we're doing about that if I, if you have the time. We have over 1.1, although performance may vary in the last couple of months, for the investments in our OPEB trust, which we have with the Plymouth County OPEB trust. Last report, we had a little over $1.1 million in that, as we've been putting aside money in every budget cycle. But it was kind of a, you know, put this much this year. And if there were surplus funds at the end of the year, we did devote, we made transfers to, to the OPEB trust even more. But now we've developed a policy through the finance subcommittee where we hope to retire the unfunded liability by, in 28 years. So we're going to do that by increasing it by $50,000 every year. So you'll see in this budget, towards the end of the line item budget that I've given you, that there's an OPEB trust line item. That's $150,000 for this budget. That'll go up $50,000 every year going forward and till we get to 300,000. So several budget cycles before you get there. And then we would maintain that 300,000 through the funding period to retire that liability. At the same time, if the, God bless you, by the way, we will maintain that. And then when the Barnstable County retirement system, if they were to get fully funded, by the way, an idea passed on by Dan at the negotiations table, we would move that assessment for Barnstable County over to totally devoted to OPEB. So when you, when you take that into account, that's how we retire the unfunded liability in 28 years. Obviously, this has to be constantly reassessed, whether it be increasing the contribution. Obviously, you have to see the fiscal situation at the time. If we get ahead of ourselves, maybe, I mean, we get ahead of the liability, we can, we can pull back a little bit. But that's, that's our policy now, is to try to retire this in, in the span of about 28 years. Okay? So these are the numbers behind the pie chart that you just saw. So we did. So we did get a lot of great news on insurance, active employees insurance, as we had a 0% increase, so that was, that was great. What accounts for most of the increase? So we did settle with all of our unions at 2%, 2%, 2% for FY '20 through FY '22 with all four of our unions. But you see salaries are up 3.26% in total, and there's, there were some things that we had to do in the secretarial unit, where we had fallen way behind in competitiveness for salaries, for union administrative assistance. So there was some work done on that front in the negotiations. So that's accounting for some of it. Other, the other thing is, we've got a trainer in this budget for our athletic programs for the first time ever. We've, we've contracted out for that service in the past. And with the increased emphasis on concussions and concussion protocol and, and student-athlete safety, we thought bringing on a trainer was the thing to do. So that's driving that up to the 3.2%. And then also, one, our co-op coordinator, who coordinates all the placements in the community at employers for, in 11th and 12th grade, for our students and our technical programs, we brought him onto our budget. So it's not a new position, but it's no longer grant-funded through Perkins, which they were kind of mandating that we bring it into the general fund because it's a, it's a position we absolutely positively need. The other big area of increase is in transportation, and that's because we just signed a new five-year deal with Cape Destinations. That's a one-time hit. So the next four years, we should see a pretty level, stable transportation budget. So if you put that over the five years of the contract, it's really not a bad increase, but we are absorbing it all in this fiscal year, in FY '21. So that all accounts for, we had a couple decreases in insurance, and then the capital budget for a 2.76% increase in total, which is about $417,000 more than previous year, the previous year. So this is just 76% of it. It's a people business and their benefits. So salaries and benefits are over 76% of our total budget, followed behind with materials and services. And I would say the majority of, of materials and services is services. We have a student population who we're extremely proud of, but they have economic disadvantages. We are 60% high needs, 32% special needs, which necessitates services, you know, that are sometimes very costly. Okay, so for the operating budget that I just presented, the total assessment for the town of Yarmouth is $2,697,811. And that's an increase of approximately $405,000 over FY '20. And I'm gonna just stop there because I have a couple slides on the debt for the project, but I was gonna hold, stop there for the moment for any questions on the operating budget.
Thanks, Bob. Got a couple of questions. Have you had a revaluation on the OPEB liability at this age on what it was?
Yeah, the most recent, it's around $14 million.
How much?
14 million.
14 million? Okay. All right. Is that typically revalued every couple of years?
Every two years, yeah. And I think they're going every year now, but, yeah, every two years.
All right. And, you know, if you're, if you're meeting that debt obligation that you mentioned, the policy that you said, I would think that you would get a break on that at some point, but...
Yes. Yeah, we do, we do, as far as the overall percentage of the Plymouth County OPEB trust for an organization as small as we are, we're a decent size of that, of that overall trust. So we are getting some, they call it a discount rate that's associated with the evaluation, the evaluation, and we do benefit from that.
Okay. And the other question I had is with regard to benefits, I noticed that the benefits in your budget are about 33% of your salaries. Does that, does that include vacation and holiday and sick time, or is that just?
That, benefits would be, would be your health, your dental, long-term disability, very small life insurance policy, so it would be the sum of all those, which are towards the end of the line item budget.
Okay. Just, sounds like it's a very high number if you don't include paid time off, but...
Yeah. We're at 65, 35, as far as a split.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think we're pretty competitive there. We've been at 65, 35 for a long time, so...
So it's part of the driver of that?
Teachers are covered under MTRS as well, so they're not in that mix?
That's correct. Well, with respect to healthcare, they are in the mix, but with respect to retirement, there's no retirement number associated with our teachers. It's all fully paid by the employees.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark?
I'm all set, thanks. Well done, Bob.
Thank you, Mark.
Eric? Okay, we're ready to proceed with the capital.
So, once again, it bears congratulations to the 12 towns and Yarmouth being one of them, that they came up with, I think, a very aggressive borrowing schedule of 20 years. I think it was level principal, fixed principal, and we were, we got a pretty favorable 3.32% interest rate, and I think some of that was because of our efforts on OPEB, among other things, because we've really never borrowed prior to this. So the amortization schedule you can see is declining, so, which should retire in the year 2039. I think for the town of Yarmouth, you're up about $22,000 from last year. And that's because the debt did go down for this year, but you had a 4%, almost a 4% increase in enrollment, you know, as a percentage of the overall enrollment. So it's enrollment percentage that totally dictates the, so you basically take 22% of the total debt that I just showed on the previous slide, which was the 6.2 million, which is in 2021. So that's how you get that 1,392,000. I think it's about a $22,000 increase over the last year. If enrollment were to remain stable, you would, you would have been paying less this year, so... And I think, oh, yeah, one other thing. It's not related to the building project, but it is something that we do every year, and I like to share this because people want to know where our students going, and that is our graduate follow-up study that we do every year. And 43% of our students, a year after graduation, these are the graduates from 2018, first of all, you see we had a 92% response rate from the graduates. 51 students, or 43%, were employed a year after graduation in the shop that they were, or technical program they were trained in, followed by 32% or 38 students who had pursued additional education, which takes many forms, two, four-year, technical colleges. And then employed not related to the shop was the next biggest, at 16 students, or 13% of the overall number. And as you see, we did have a high of 10 students electing the military, which we're very, very proud of and honor at graduation. And then only three of those students were not in the labor force or unemployed at one year after. These are similar results we see over the last several years. And we added a question, which is, where are you? Are you on Cape Cod? And 84% of the respondents said, we are on Cape Cod. Now, I think that's, that was one of the questions I would get when we were talking about the building, investing in the building. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep young people on Cape Cod, and I think the programs that we train students in and that they can go, increase their earnings by, by getting more pathways and more credentials, do make it more likely, not that it's not easy, I mean, not that it's easy to stay on and live on Cape Cod, because we know the reasons. And I know you're all working on it, because I think it's vitally important that we do something, and I know you're all doing a lot, because we've had meetings, superintendents, the Cape and Island superintendents have met with the town managers and legislators about this issue. It's not that nobody knows, knows about it, they're working on it so that we can change the demographic mix of the Cape a bit, because the older population is gonna need people to perform the services of many of the programs, you know, the graduates from our programs. So I hope we can be part of the solution. So I think that's the last slide. Yes. So, that's it.
I do have one other question.
Yes, sure.
The other question I have is more of a structural one. In one of your first slides, you talked about the finance committee.
Yes.
And I don't recall, I'd have read the agreement at one point or another, but is there a separate finance committee set out in the agreement, or is that a matter that, because the school committee is, has, is independent of the finance committee apparently?
The, the, the school committee, the finance subcommittee, the five individuals, those are, that's just a subcommittee of the overall school.
Of the school committee?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And I didn't know how that was, if that was provided as part of the agreement, or is that a, something that has been decided by policy?
It's policy, definitely, yeah. They, they, that's been a longstanding subcommittee, but the, the chair and the, and the committee itself votes to create new subcommittees or dissolve subcommittees as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you. You always give a great presentation with a lot of very detailed background information, so our questions are all answered here and the literature provided, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I wish you the most success.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, Bob, and as the building, or as the board of selectmen, I don't know, am I the selectman or the towns representative?
You're the towns representative.
I have so many of those, I confuse it to what my capacity is for each. But the building's looking great. I think we, at the meeting last month, we talked about it's 70% complete, not including the demo.
Correct, yeah.
And I didn't get to tour it last meeting because somebody cornered me and wanted to bend my ear, so I missed the tour. But if you haven't been by, it looks fabulous, so congratulations on all your hard work on that, too.
Thank you. And I offer an invitation to anyone here that would like to come see it. We've got to do it in small groups, though.
Under five, 10?
Yeah, under five. I think, I think there's a number.
Is this gonna, I know that somebody was just telling me outside that Boston just shut down construction projects for two weeks.
You're kidding me?
So is this gonna affect?
I've not heard that. What I've been hearing is mostly material-related. And we had a meeting this morning, and they didn't think those material issues were going to slow down the overall timetable, but I haven't heard what you just said.
I think that was just work in the city, but I could be wrong.
It was Marty Walsh made that, it was the city of Boston.
Okay, okay.
I too would like to thank you, Bob, for your very fine presentation, as usual, very thorough, very complete, and very fiscally sound, which is much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Bob.
Stay safe and healthy.
You as well.
Thank you.
Next item is inspectional services budget review. That's Rich.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've, we've asked that the department leads on these presentations stay at home and compliance with the directive, so that Rich and I will be heading up the presentations on those. They haven't changed since the last, this is, these are two departments that did not change.
Milwaukee?
Dropped the budget off back in December.
So you're gonna do both inspectional and community services?
Yeah, so we'll do inspectional and community services, yeah.
Okay.
Come over here if you need.
It's all yours, Rich.
I'll do my best to pinch-hit. It will be abbreviated comments. Do my best to answer your questions. Up first is the building department. I know Mark has been really busy addressing a whole number of initiatives, and he's highlighted some here. Been a very successful year as far as permits issued and work associated with issuing those permits, and coordinating with other town departments on various projects, whether it's town response team to building issues and demolitions and cleanups. He has proposed budget, there is a correction to this. Mark neglected to add, under FY '21, those are the right amounts, with one addition being roughly $16,000 some odd dollars related to weights and measures. IMA with Barnstable is also reflected in this budget, and so that number you see there under expenses is up about $16,000 more from that $42,000. If you were to look in your budget book, the number is about $58,000 some odd thousand.
If we had a weights and measures department, it'd be there.
And that's just an accounting, where it lands, accounting-wise, in accordance with the state chart of accounts. Salaries are up slightly. Basically, those are just contractual wage increases, settled union contracts. Expenses are level-funded. The big issue Mark has is just keeping up with all the level violations and inspection activity. And we have, for a number of years, been taking an effort to scan everything into Acela, and not particularly noted here, but there is a movement underway. The county is moving off of Acela onto a new licensing permitting system, and so that'll become a challenge, not only for Mark, but also for the IT operation, to likely move or migrate towards that solution, as Acela will probably be stopped supported by the He also references here vehicle situation. We did recently acquire two electric vehicle, electric vehicles, and we're waiting on EverSource now to make sure our charging stations are actually charged, but hopefully any day now those will be operational, fully operational. They have been delivered, registered, and inspected and ready to go. And once we get that, we have an opportunity through our Green Communities Program and some other grant opportunities to follow up to improve our town hall fleet and how that, what that looks like. There was a, huh. Suppose I just missed it in my, when I got this this afternoon to review, but usually under municipal inspections is the board of health. I thought that was presented separately. The one change to the board of health budget is substantially the same as the past, with one addition, and that is the introduction of a part-time rental inspector, because of the increase in short-term rentals with third-party rentals. They, I forget the exact number, Dan, but Bruce was able, a while back in this process, indicate a level of increased activity and new registrations that they had to process and then send inspectors out and could make the case of the need, maybe ultimately for a full-time, but we committed and agreed to a part-time position for now, and then a potential move forward on a full-time position in the future, depending on how that works out.
You know, interestingly, in this whole thing, what was driving some of this request was short-term rental, but recently I've become made aware of requests by people who were presently registered with us to become unregistered with us. So there might be some sort of a move afoot to get off the radar screen on a rental. So I, I thought the best approach, instead of going down the road with a full-timer until we, until we strike some kind of understanding better what the workload is between the, we continue to reserve a intern, that's been incredibly productive for Bruce's team, but also the part-time position, and then we can reevaluate it. We'll have all the revenue information, all the numbers of new units that came online with the registration, and we could have a better idea next year what that might look like, if you wanted to make a commitment to a full-time staffer at that point. The board of health and Bruce himself would lobby today, if he were here, for a full-time staff, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that to you. But we've been pretty measured with our approach on that, you know, hiring a full-timer is a big commitment, and we thought that our cautious approach of a part-timer with intern support should be able to get us through where we need to go for another year.
Just a question. Right now, fees collected $652,000, so it looks like we're covering our expenses. Is that, is that accurate? We're, we're, we've got salaries, you know, just looking at 2020, we had fees of $652,000. We had salaries...
Are you looking at a slide of Selectman Holcomb?
Yeah, salaries, and, well, total budget, $542,000. So we're more than covering the, the budget of the department. Is that, are those fees?
Not sure. Just clarification of what you're looking at when you say fees that are covering...
First page of the presentation, it says fees collected... First page of the presentation, it says fees collected $652,000.
There we go, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are Building Department inspection, building permit fees, I should say, but various inspections that have to be in building plan and approval require a fee payment associated with them, and so based on that, you're correct, it's covering the cost of those departments.
Yeah, all right. So, so, you know, yeah, just rough numbers, based on the amount of activity involved, it looks like it's costing us about 80 bucks per permit, quote-unquote, you know, if you just use permits as the driver of the cost, and that's not necessarily indicative of what all the activity is, but, and just thinking about that in terms of projected activity for Airbnb, and what that might be, and, you know, how many inspections we might be called to do.
There's been, you know, the Department would tell you there's been an uptick, I want to say the last time I reviewed it was maybe in the neighborhood of $80,000, does that sound right, Rich?
Yeah.
Yeah, about $80,000 additional dollars.
Of permit fees?
Yeah, related to the registrations, the rental registrations, which are $80 a unit if you pay in person, if you're doing it online, so that's a fair sum of money, but if we were to go down the road with hiring a full-timer, you're probably looking at 55 to 65, and then the benefits load of 40 percent more than that.
Right, right.
So that's why I kind of wanted to take a wait-and-see approach. It's definitely added, you know, to their workload, but I think a part-time and an intern will be able to be in a good position to give better advice next year to you.
Okay.
You might recall, and Mark had indicated it here on the expense line, that some of that expense represents an OPEB charge. You might recall a few years back, when you set the fees for a Building Department Inspection Services, you also set out to recover, not the whole part, I believe it was about a 50 percent estimate, about 50 percent of the costs of OPEB attributed to this department were recovered through fees as well, so there's about 50 percent more theoretically that you could go, the thought being at the time was that the people paying the fee, using the services shouldn't bear the whole brunt, because there's a general good to the effort as well, and that should be on the whole tax base, not just the people using the service. But in any event, you are recovering from, I think about three or four years ago, when you set that fee, about 50 percent of the OPEB recovery as well.
Good.
Anybody? Any other questions? I'm answered. Tracy? Thank you.
Nothing.
Okay.
Community Services budget is a little more comprehensive. As you know, it includes several divisions. The first one is the golf operation, which operates, it's in the Community Services Department at the moment, but operates as an enterprise fund, and so I, before we get into the details that Scott had put together and Pat, the enterprise fund is balanced, and when you review the warrant articles later on, you'll see that, and it also includes an allocation of, I think it's $225,000, or $200,000 of retained earnings as part of that balancing, in an effort to lower the request to the Department of Revenue to approve our estimated receipts that balance the budget. If we were to use the full, if golf course receipts were to balance entirely without the retained earnings, the propeller's budget, we'd be exceeding our actuals for the prior year, and we'd have a problem with then setting our tax rate. So the application of retained earnings against their budget to balance it out is a little bit of a safer approach.
Are you talking about retained earnings from the golf enterprise fund?
Correct.
Not the general fund?
Correct.
Well, except that, I think you have to be careful of the definition, because the retained earnings includes the $300,000 some odd thousand that was allocated at town meeting.
That is also correct, yes.
But we're not adding additionally to that?
No.
Right, and this proposed budget, it's balanced without any further subsidy from the general fund to the golf operation. If Scott were here, I'm sure he would talk to you about all the improvements that they've been making, and I know they've been hard at work, and the nice weather over the winters enabled them to get some additional work done, and he'd also be talking about a new approach to some of our capital items, moving to an operating lease for golf carts and for mowers, another type of golf course equipment, as opposed to buying it outright and paying it on a bond, or coming up with other revenues to pay it off. It's more of an operating lease, so they can turn these over over the course of five-year period, and just always renew the lease with new equipment that they can save on their maintenance budget, was kind of the approach that he wanted to take. That results in a, those fundamental changes on the, on the equipment on the golf court leases, golf cart leases, plus contractual wage increases resulted in a budget of $3,008,000. That salary supports a, I think it's 15 positions, several which need to be filled, but it's carrying all the positions contemplated to be in place, and there's some increases in the expense budget, largely due to increased costs in fertilizer and applications.
How many full-time positions are in the current year's budget?
The same, no new positions, and every year we budget 100 percent, it's in those salary wage projections that you receive in your budget book. We allocate the expected positions to be funded and the expected salaries 100 percent. We don't underfund a position, and we don't overfund a position. We fund exactly what we expect to have in place. Now, the variance has come, and we have this discussion each year when we talk about free cash. If somebody leaves, and you don't have any buyback or any account, or the replacement typically coming in at a lower cost, it would generate a savings, but you can't go in banking on that to happen when you're setting a budget, because as the accounting office approves payroll every week, they gotta know that it's been funded and provided for, and if you, if you haven't, they have to disallow the payment, so it gets to be a legal issue, too. So the appropriation needs to be there to process a payment, whether it's an accounts payable or a salary account. And I know Scott is working with Town Administrator and Human Resource Director in filling some of these vacant positions, the advertisements have been out. I think the key here on the increase in expenses is really on the chemicals and the fertilizer. Scott's listed a couple of other things as well, but those are some of the key drivers. He references various challenges in golf here, some of them we are currently working on, the POS and the Restaurant RFP, that came and was due last week, and unfortunately, due to the circumstances we found ourselves in the last several days, we haven't had a chance to get, to review that, but unfortunately, we've only received one response, and we'll be reviewing that shortly.
Could you give some feedback on how we had to extend the deadline for the submission because of the commentary we received on it, about not wanting to run both restaurants?
Right, so we did have mandatory site visits, if we won, if we had respondents, we wanted to make sure they understood what they were getting themselves into, so we asked them to review the sites, and one of the comments was, we'd like to respond, but we want to do one and not the other. Initially, when we proposed the service, we asked it to cover both locations, and it looked like that might not be, get a good response on that basis, so we did an addendum and amended our response and allowed people to quote on either/or or both, and we still only got the one response. I think that one of the keys here, I don't know the details, the way Scott would know them, obviously, but there's some capital improvements that will be needed to Bayberry and Bass River, and as we move forward through our capital improvement plan in the future, that's one of, you know, my goals, that I want to flesh out these capital improvement plans, not just for golf, but for all departments, a little bit more detail, but we do know that those are coming, and we'd have to look at, what does our debt drop-off for golf look like to be able to accommodate something like that, and how would we finance that, those capital improvements? I'll take a break there, and if there are any questions.
I have one question.
Go, Tracy.
Is there an increase in minimum wage that affects this budget that we've budgeted for?
think there was an increase, it was a relatively marginal increase, 50 cents, or perhaps in a couple in case, a couple of cases, a dollar to the seasonal wage rates that we're, have to pay in order to get people to work for us.
Yeah, okay.
There's definitely been pressure from that. And we, a number of employees were held at $15 an hour for a very long time, but commentary indicated that we were likely to lose them to our neighboring towns, so we did make an adjustment to a few people.
Okay. My other question is, it might be for Ed, but you're kind of a financial genius, too, so, do we know what rate we have on the note that we just did for the golf course improvements?
The interest rate?
Yeah.
We do know the rate, I don't know what it is off the top of my head to tell you tonight, but I can certainly get that to you. It's, it's a low rate, I just wouldn't want to say what it is without.
As low as it is now, the rates that are out there?
That was under one for the.
No, it's not under one, but it's, it's a small percentage.
All right.
But we do, our finance advisory firm that works with the town, I'm not sure if this is where you're going, but we do look at opportunities to refund bonds and save if we have the opportunity. It's a good point, especially with where the rates are now, and recent events, that might present an opportunity.
I just wonder if it would save us enough to get a little bit more capital in there.
Well, especially when he's proposing some of the challenges ahead, you know, the capital improvements required, may, you know, if you were able to refund a bond and create some debt service space, you can replace it with new money to accomplish some of those improvements.
We'll look that up and get that to you.
I mean, I was, he knew where I was going with that, that's, was my thought.
Town libraries is part of the Community Services Department, and this is a relatively easy walk-through their budget, there hasn't been a lot of changes in this one. I guess the comment here is, we are working over, is it a five-year plan, Dan?
We are, but I sent the notice to the Board a couple of weeks back, indicate, we're the last of 16 communities that still haven't met the minimum contribution that the state looks for on that, so we might actually propose in next year's budget that we close the gap. It's not a lot of money to close the gap, but I'd like to close the gap so we don't need a waiver anymore as we get in position to get some state grant money for a feasibility study, but almost everybody climbed out of the problem they were in from a few years ago.
So prior, when we initiated this year's budget process, we were under a five-year plan to close that gap to get off the minimum funding requirement from the state for state aid. We do get the waiver each year, and we have to submit some information to obtain that. Jane has outlined some of the things happening here, they've been very busy. I do, as I understand it, have a lot of very satisfied customers and pretty well-attended programs and general circulation program at the libraries, and the people were very grateful over this past weekend, the last several days, to be able to take advantage of the libraries while they were still open. As you can see here, the increase in the budget is relatively minor, up 20, about $20,000 on total, of which all of that is due to contractual wage increases, there's no changes in positions, just the negotiated cost of living adjustments for collective bargaining agreements. And here's Jane, referencing our, the five-year plan, and that plan has been funded through the wage line, obviously, we haven't had any change in expenses. Her challenges reference, this project she's been working on for quite a time now, is what does a potential new library look like? They have a lot of space challenges, as well as the quality of an older facility versus what you might expect with a newer facility. And I just can't emphasize enough, again, I don't know all the intricate details of their budget, other than the numbers and how they come together, but I would really reemphasize her last point here, they do have a great staff, and we get a lot of positive feedback and comments from patrons to the library, so we should all be happy with that.
Just to give you a little background, Jane, the extended hours we instituted a couple of years ago of free cash, that's been really popular, the programming's been really popular, she had very steady traffic over the weekend, and one of the conversations that we were trying to work on as to how could we keep library access open to the public, so there's quite a robust, what I'd call like bulletin board or listserv of, you know, different interested parties, there's one for HR, there's one for library directors, and the issue that came back is, because we talked about, you know, you could reserve your order by phone or by email, and we could put the books out in a receptacle at the vestibule, but the problem that was identified by some other libraries across the Cape was the problem of contamination associated with the materials that went out, and there's no way to clean it. And so, once that worked its way into the library dialogue up and down the Cape, that pretty much ended that concept there, and you know, one of the things that, like I said, I'm mindful of is that we're in this environment where things need to be appropriately cleaned, and we don't have staff that fit that billet, if you will. So that's one of the reasons why the library decision was made for what it was, because there's just no way to ensure the integrity of the material coming back to us.
I'm not sure they're accepting books at this point back, and we tried to return one today.
Oh, did you really? Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't go.
No.
Wouldn't go in the hopper.
Say, hang on, over 21 days. If it doesn't grow anything, it's good. So, I mean, like, we literally are looking at every interaction imaginable to try to bring it back, and we run it through the Board of Health, and that's what, that's what happened over the weekend with the libraries.
All right, moving right along, and I just, again, want to apologize, I don't do all the great work that these departments do justice in these quick presentations, but next up is Carl von Hohn in the Division of Natural Resources. Carl also has a pretty straightforward budget this year. I think what you'll see is no level-funded on the expenses, and the increases in salaries are due to the settled contracts. Carl and his team have been doing a great job, doing a lot of work on shellfish programs and the reef off the coast of Yarmouth. He's been invaluable resource in the wastewater planning efforts, and has attended some of the public outreach that we've been done, been doing, and is really a leader in the area on alternative measures such as the cranberry bugs and some of the testing that's going on with them, and so he's been a great resource on that. And he does like, when I do talk to him, I, he often comments on this item down here about the pump-out boat program, continued making an impact to keeping our rivers, estuaries clean, and his programs on the oyster fishery. We had the pleasure of talking to, and I can't recall his name, but when we were doing some wastewater outreach, talked to one of the oystermen, and he's been going one of the programs in Lewis Bay, and was a great program, great idea that he's trying to develop in town here to do some shellfishing. Of course, Carl's been involved in some of the big projects we have going on with the Baxter grist mill and the Parkers River Bridge, and so their input is really invaluable in getting those through and obtaining the funding and maintaining the funding on those projects. So here's his budget, and you can see we're up about $17,000, again, is just the contract As far as challenges, Carl, we're here, he'd keep telling you, as almost all our Department heads would, is that we're really busy, and calls for service, and the expectation of our community, when they do call for services, are pretty high, as they ought to be, and so keeping up a high standard of service is important to him. And the major issue of all the ones that are listed here, which you already heard with the Capital Budget Committee, is trying to resolve and find an approach to fund the coastal infrastructure projects that have just been deferred for a number of years. He asks, year after year, on the Capital Budget Committee, and with their current mechanism, don't have an approach. don't have an approach to satisfy, you know, the ultimate need, and so that would be another example of an area where I could hopefully help over the course of the next year with the Capital Budget Committee and with some of the department heads, kind of trying to find an approach that we can propose to the selectmen and to the Capital Budget Committee to address some of these needs. We have to be a little bit creative in our thinking and financing of them. That being said, we just did get some information beginning of last week on some grant opportunities for coastal infrastructure, which we forwarded to Carl, and haven't had a chance to follow up with him yet, but I'm sure he'll be pursuing that as a way to achieve some of that, some of those needs.
Just to let you know, Carl's been down in his department, a couple of officers, at least one since July last year, and then one probably about October. We just had, we made offers to two, they all went through the background check, and one started, and just before the day before the other one was supposed to start, they said they weren't interested in the job anymore, found another job. So we had another candidate ready to go, so she's going through the background review period, so I expect he'll be in full staffing on those positions, probably within maybe a month or so. So he has, he has been way down, you know, he's a small group anyways, and to lose the two that he lost, he's done yeoman's work, he and his staff, to keep up with what's going on, but he should be fully complimented in about thirty days.
Rich, has there been, excuse me, an identification of some of the details of the coastal work? You know, some big numbers involved there, I mean, fifteen to twenty million dollars, it seems to me, and I was wondering if there'd been some detail developed for what needs to be done and what the frequency is of some of those things having to be done?
Let's say the answer is yes and no. On some of them, I think they're probably planning-type estimates of what might be involved, based on his knowledge, he's very knowledgeable in what it takes to get some of these things done. On others, I think it's Run Pond, perhaps, he's done quite a bit of more detailed work, and I think that's probably a little bit more of a solid number of, you know, and that's been in the works for a number of years now, just for lack of getting it off the ground with the funding. So I think in some of these projects, he's got a much more detailed intimate knowledge of what it's going to take, and the others are just a little bit more estimates. But that's the type of information that I'd like to flesh out over the next, course of the next cycle, so we get here again next year, we're not talking about the same thing again and thinking it's deja vu. We'd like to be able to follow through on some of these things.
Well, Run Pond had one to town meeting, there was an article, town meeting a few years back, that did not pass for that, so that was flushed out and brought to the town meeting.
So that's probably why he knows more details on that one.
Any questions before we go on to recreation? Okay, go.
Recreation, there have been a couple of changes to how this is presented compared to last year, and I'll point those out when we get to it. But as you know, pickleball is a thriving activity, and we have the implementation of the pickleball courts over the past year, so that's changed some of the programming. And as I understand it, pretty much all the programs, by and large, have been very successful and well-attended, and I think you might see that comment in a couple of slides. In addition to the just regular recreation program, some of the rental programs, particularly with Flax Pond, have been increasing and been successful. And also highlighted here is just the extra ability, capacity I should say, of having well-trained qualified staff to respond and fill in in events of emergencies, in this case, it's highlighted as the tornado event. The budget, this is, so as you might recall, the recreation budget has two components to it, one is the general operating budget component, the second is the offset receipts component. Offset receipts representing, those activities are programs that pay a fee, and the instructors for those programs get paid out of those fees that are paid, so to the extent you're very successful in your programs, you'd collect more fees, but yet you still got to set the budget with the instructors and salaries of those people participating and executing the programs. Whereas this budget here for the operating budget is more along the lines of the administration, general administration of recreation. The expenses are level funded, but you do see a big increase in the salaries, and the reason for the change there is similar to the other departments that you've seen, particularly the Public Works, several positions that were funded through enterprise-type funds. We also had our assistant recreation director paying for, paid for out of the offset account, and the level of fees weren't sufficient to cover that, so we moved that back to the operating budget, which is a significant portion of that increase, and a corresponding, not dollar-for-dollar, but a decrease in the offset salary budget. As you might recall, a couple meetings ago when I updated you as to changes in the budget, overall, to the extent we shifted anything, either from the water account or this recreation offset or non-general fund, funds, to the general fund, that total increase has been funded by allocations to enterprise funds and the offset in total. So in this case, it's not a dollar-for-dollar offset to the recreation operating budget, but all those shifts that we have made in total are funded by increased indirect cost allocations.
Just to give you some additional information, programming fees, with the exception of pickleball, seem to be on the decline, so there's a lot of different reasons, I suppose, for that, but the director was mindful of the fact that we don't want to get into a position where, you know, we're funding staff out of an account that is declining at a level that's hard to predict. But the general cost of some of these camps, I know, like with Flax Pond, is outstripping some of our people's ability to pay for it. So we've got to kind of work on a plan to look at affordability going forward, too, so it's a lot of different things in flux there. I wish everything was as popular as pickleball, or at least half of that way, but that's what happens with recreation stuff.
And here's, and to that point, you see, under the offset budget on the current year, that's put, the comment here that's underperforming. And so it's not necessarily problematic, and so if you don't realize revenues from programs, you will have a corresponding decrease in costs, because you just won't run the programs, you bring in the instructors, and so that's how we'd manage that type of situation to get us through. But to Dan's point, you can't keep budgeting that in the next year's budget and expect a better result necessarily, and that's why we have that shift from the offset fund to the general recreation budget under the tax levy.
I have a question for you, Rich. In terms of how that assistant's position got funded in the first place out of an offset receipt account, when, you know, rec director, assistant rec director, what they do operationally applies to all the programs, not just, for example, the adventure program at Flax Pond, or not just the swimming program, for example. Did that just kind of get back then at some point because there was no other way to fund that position? Or how did it, it seems to me that it was not a good fit right from the beginning, from an economic standpoint.
I think conceptually, you're right, it doesn't make a lot of sense necessarily to put a position that's available for all recreation-type services into a fund that is really programmatically based, the funding is programmatically based. So conceptually, I guess I would agree, I'm not sure of the history of why we did it or how we did it that way, that goes back a couple of years, I think.
Goes back quite a ways, yeah.
But in any event, that was a position we found ourselves in, and we had the opportunity this year, as well as those other positions we talked about, that were funded out of water or other enterprise funds, to try to rectify some of that, and so we took that opportunity to clean that up.
And I mean, the underperforming receipts account, it just would compound that problem if it didn't get switched into the operation.
That's right. And you can see here that the budget last year to this year is a decrease, and a slight decrease in the expenses. That decrease isn't quite as much as the increase here, but like I said, in total, of all those positions that we shifted out of enterprise and offset, are funded by the indirect costs to those same funds in one form or fashion. Just in this case, this one got a little bit of a break, the offset got a little bit break compared to some of the other funds. But essentially, it's going to set up recreation to be a little bit more successful in the future, stabilize its financing, and really, you do want your programs to be managed in either a revolving fund or an offset-type fund, so that it can grow, expand, or constrict with the demand that it's experiencing without having the influence of a non-programmatic expense in the budget.
And those offset accounts, don't you have to get permission from DOR to increase the cap on those from time to time? In other words, if you don't increase the cap, the fund recovers, you go over the ceiling, then that money would revert to the general fund, wouldn't it?
Right, well, every year, any surplus in the offset does close to the general fund, and so that does happen. And every year, you need to get approval if the amount that you're requesting is higher than the prior year. And generally, it has been a problem, because the amounts we're requesting are usually, just like our estimated receipts to the general fund, are usually supported by prior year actual results. So usually, we're not asking for anything that we haven't demonstrated that we could perform, and so it hasn't been a problem getting those permissions. But you're right, we do need to get that if we're going to increase that level of expenditure. And again, a similar situation here with the seasonal salaries, there has been some wage adjustment to keep competitive with the market and get lifeguards and seasonal staff to actually work for the town. And we didn't talk about it relative to the other budgets, but I think the sentiment expressed on this slide is relatively the same for a lot of our operations, is keeping well-qualified staff is tough everywhere on Cape Cod, but particularly when you have a challenging wage situation, it makes it that much harder. And so we do need to consider that as we move forward, maybe these budgets aren't adequate to support what we might need in wage growth if we want to keep a certain level of service and a certain level of standard with our staff. There was a discussion here on potentially adding full-time staff, which would allow for additional programming. That wasn't something that came up necessarily in this year's budget process, but that we have it here as a challenge and a potential, that might be something that we would take up for future discussion, but it's not suggested here in this FY21 budget recommendation at this time.
Rich, can you go back to that last slide? It says in the second bullet that we must stay competitive with, was that beach salaries?
Yeah, there's quite a competition for lifeguards.
Yeah, lifeguards are very difficult, and again, I don't, unfortunately, don't know the details, but as I understand it, we're among the lowest-paid lifeguard staffs on Cape Cod.
I see.
Especially with competition of college students, that makes it even more difficult. However, now all the college students are back home, so I don't know how that changes for the spring and summer.
I think the shark situation's going to help us a little bit, too, maybe, so.
In what way?
That kids that were interested in outer beach.
Oh, I see.
Jobs, Yarmouth looks pretty good now, you know, even if the pay's not quite up there.
Got it.
Shark-free zone.
I mean, you might take a little less not to get eaten.
Could be the case.
No guts, no glory.
I know that even when we did have favorable salaries, it's always been difficult getting lifeguards, it's very, very competitive, there's just not a ton of them walking around.
I think if you read the local papers, every August, it seems like it's a recurring theme, every town's grappling with.
Yeah, it is, exactly.
Not being able to staff the beaches, so.
Well, August is when the college kids go back to school.
Right.
College kids go back to school in August, so.
Yeah, that's another problem. Usually, you'll see the, you know, beach closures around that, those times, because they just can't staff them all.
You've got one more to go, senior services.
Senior services.
Relatively straightforward budget. There's one significant change, largely consistent with prior years, but the one big difference you'll see is that we did fund the transportation program a little more fully, which was previously a free cash request, is now in the budget. But Diane has indicated some of the successes here, she's made some significant changes in how they produce and distribute their newsletter, which had some significant cost savings for the COA, and also highlighting the transportation program, which is, I understand, has been pretty well-received, the expanded service. And that's why we see the requests for additional funds to staff that service. Also, an issue we've been working on with some contractual arrangements, but they had upwards of two hundred tablets that were received at COA and been distributing them to seniors. Not all of them have been distributed, but there's some amount of that two hundred to provide those that have, with internet, you know, they don't have their own internet access, can otherwise have a cell service to these tablets to get access. So accessibility for, and getting resources and training and how to use those has been part of their effort over the past year, and that's been a well-received program.
Well, it's funny that you bring that up, because that's one of the things, I think, that a lot of the older population utilize the library for, and is for their internet, so hopefully.
That's a good point. As we move forward through our current situation, that might be a way to help remediate, you know, some negative impacts, you know, can't remediate them all, but that might be a way to help out. We do have some tablets available.
Rich, can you go back to that last slide? That last bullet there, about the new newsletter, that's a savings of five, does it say five thousand dollars a month?
I'd have to go back and check, that does seem a little high.
Okay, yeah, if you could check that, because.
Maybe five thousand dollars.
Maybe that's a total, yeah, if you could check on that, because that just sort of jumped out at me, that's a lot of money to save in the course of a month.
Right. One of the things that gets difficult, and, you know, perhaps an area we could do better on, there's a lot of interaction, as you know, with our friends of the COA, who's done a great amount of work and supports our efforts quite a bit, and they're very active, and so when we talk about some of the things that are going on at COA, it's, you know, if Diane here hears, she could explain it to you much better than I can, but they're, you know, they have agreements in place as to, the friends will pick up the tab on certain things, whereas our operating budget picks up the tab on other things and how those things work. So it's really important for senior services particularly, not just Yarmouth, but most communities have a similar arrangement where it's almost like a cost sharing, informal cost-sharing arrangement where an understanding of where these monies get and how things that people want from the senior service community is how they get funded and provided. So as you can see here, the budget for expenses is just up nominally, but the expense for salaries is up about forty-seven thousand dollars, which actually is a reduction based on our contractual arrangements, so a few thousand bucks, and an add of fifty thousand dollars for the transportation program that was previously funded for fifty thousand dollars from free cash. And so now that transportation program is funded within the budget, it's not up a full fifty thousand, because we actually did in our case with this contractual arrangement, the way the movement of people work this year was actually a reduction. And here Diane is indicating that fifty thousand dollar increase for the transportation program. The nominal increase was for cellphone, additional use on cellphones, and I believe that actually has something to do with that tablet program as well, to some extent. She's listed a bunch of challenges here. Again, the recurring theme you see here is part-time and seasonal staffing and wages associated with those positions. Some capital and some maintenance needs, which our facilities department is able to help out in some respects, but this goes back to my earlier comment, moving forward over the course of the next year, I've been through one round with the Capital Budget Committee this year, this is another area where we could perhaps have some improvement in the capital planning process and try to identify their needs and how can we address some of those needs.
Just to let you know, the bathroom project, that was quite a bit of discussion last year, we had applied for a state grant on the disabilities program at the state, and we were pretty close on that, but in the end, with the competition and the grants, we didn't quite. close on that, but in the end, with the competition on the grants, we didn't quite get it, but we'll keep applying to see if we can get an offset for that, for a project.
And a couple of the things that are referenced here as challenges, those are things that when we do settle our final position with the director of senior services, that perhaps we programmatically, we could address. I don't know that necessarily requires additional funding, but those are the types of things that we'd have to consider from a programmatic standpoint in the senior services. Are they, do they require some resources to properly address and is the board prepared to support, excuse me, those program changes? So those are things that we can work with going forward, before the next budget cycle.
While you're on that slide, Rich, the increase in elder homelessness, was there any discussion at all about how perhaps the senior center or the council and agent could be helpful or supportive, or were there any discussions about programmatically maybe a way to be of some help in that area?
Well, we've tried to work on a scenario. We brought, there was a consultant that was brought in last year related to what I'd call like house sharing
Oh, yes.
program, right?
Yep.
Part of the problem has been with that concept is a lot of folks who would have space available, they don't really want strangers necessarily in their home. And how is it that we can get the people looking for a place to stay, to meet with that? We haven't quite been able to get movement on that as it relates to a good program, because one of the, one of the things we careful of is you don't want to recommend somebody for something like that, it doesn't work out, and we're in a heap of a problem on that. But that is a significant situation that takes up a fair amount of time with the age-friendly group and also the senior services. What are we going to do with folks like this? There's not an easy answer for it.
But is it a topic that fits in with like the Housing Trust or other committees or other groups? You know, I mean, it kind of jumps out, if we've got an increase in elder homelessness.
Yeah, I think.
I'd just hate to see the senior center sort of burdened with this. I think it requires, you know, others that we have working on this, or who should be working on this, at the sort of layout of some recommendations.
I'm sure if Pat were here, she could probably highlight the
Yeah.
efforts a lot better than I'm able to do at the moment, but we can make sure we can follow through and get a response to you on that.
Yeah, I'd like to bring this up at some point, Mr. Chairman, as a future agenda item, just to kind of delve into that.
And we kind of just roughly talked about that. Some of the programmatic challenges, we don't have recommendations yet on that. It's more about the capital planning and the part-time seasonal needs and how we can address that. But Sarah O'Reilly is our new HR director. We keep saying new, at some point, she won't be new, but she's been working hard on a lot of these seasonal and part-time issues, not just for senior services, but a lot of the departments. That's the last.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. I think that in light of the community services that are now all on hold because of the coronavirus, I just want to, you know, we talked a lot about the offset accounts and the receipts, those are obviously going to be impacted, so I'm sure at this point in time, we don't have an estimate of what that's going to be, but hopefully we're, have a plan for the future on how to recover that, those funds.
Yeah, so, you know, late-breaking news, just the, you know, day before you need to approve your warrant, I do have some suggestions when we get to the warrant discussion to that exact point.
We've also been told to start tabulating expenses as it relates on a similar front that we do with a FEMA-related episode, so.
Right. I assume that that's why they made it a national emergency, so those funds could trickle down to the states and then hopefully the communities.
Yeah, we did get some guidance today, which is, you know, what I would have assumed. It's a traditional model in this type of environment with a state of emergency. It's usually a 75-25 share, so, but you have to demonstrate what your additional costs are. They won't pay you if you're routine, standard salaries that you're going to incur anyway. But to the extent we have a cost above and beyond our normal operation, hopefully it'll continue to be that model of a potential of a 75% share. But if you might recall your discussion from, I think it was your last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, in our FEMA fund, we've got receipts now coming in that were from 2011 and '12, so it unfortunately could take a time to get it.
Yep.
There's a cost reporting process and a validation process that they go to, and it isn't always particularly efficient on the federal government side of things.
To say the least.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Rich. Approve and sign 2020 ATM warrant is next.
Yeah, so we have a copy of the warrant as in a draft form. So before we get into that, I wanted to share some correspondence that we received recently related to what's going on up in Boston. And related to town meetings and what happens if this is an extended period of interruption. What is it we can do about that? So there is an act that's been filed by the governor. I mean, this is the governance, and one of the provisions in there would be approval to move the town meeting by 30 days.
So 30, okay.
Yep. And then also, you know, again, depending upon how it all lays out, provisions in there that if for whatever reason you're unable to get a budget by the end of the fiscal year, then you can go on a 1/12 previous year spending plan like cities do. So they're working on that now. I don't, I don't know what the story is. I mean, obviously, I think there was a town close to us that had a town meeting, I forget, very, like maybe next week or something, that that's already been impacted. But as far as now, you know, we're out, April 28th, we're beyond the April 6 deadline of the three-week situation, but you know, we'll take it by case by case, and that's why the warrant's here in front of you, because I figured we go down and through the process tonight is the last scheduled meeting. We need to go to print sometime like on Wednesday or Thursday to meet the deadlines that were presently under, so that's why we're.
Does the 30-day deadline only count for town meetings, or is it for ballot questions, too? Because if we could utilize that, we could solve another issue that we have.
We're going to look for some clarification on that. Right now, it was addressing the ballot question, but I do believe, though, that it may be within the selectman's purview to call an extra election if they wanted to. So we'll look to get a better answer on that down the line.
I think we should include this information at our next update, because we really didn't, you know, project out, and I think people should be unnoticed that they may have to be flexible about town meeting.
Right.
Absolutely. I don't think we have a choice as it stands right now. If, I mean, we don't know.
We don't know.
We can't gather more than 25 people anyway, so that will expire April 7th. Is that April 7th at this point in time now?
Unless it's extended, it might be extended.
Maybe.
Right.
We'll have to wait and see, but I think, you know, just give people a heads up as to what
Yeah.
what the moving parts look like.
Is it, is it best, though, to take instead of, is it best to take a wait-and-see approach, or is it best to utilize the 30 days from the beginning so people have clear expectations?
It's a good question.
I mean, I guess I just wonder if it's.
It's something we're going to have to talk about.
Yeah.
My recommendation from here would be we go tonight with the idea that, well, here's what's in front of us, and in case it expires and we're good on the 6th, we'd be in good position to hold it on the 28th. We can get all the necessary business we need to accomplish done after the ban expires or the prohibition of meetings expire in between, before this gets scheduled. If we don't take a position on it tonight, then I can't produce the book, the warrant, so.
I just wonder, like, if everybody has the thing with the wrong date on it.
Oh, I know. So we're not going to send it out for publication, and like, that's what got us into trouble, I think, two years ago when we ran out. So at some point, what we would do is, it goes up on the website for people to download, but I'm hesitant at this point to put that out until at least the suspension period is over. That way, we'll have a better idea on what's going to go. But worse comes to worse, we can put a sticker on the cover page, you know, if it comes down to doing that before we distribute them, so it's just, it's one of those, we're in a tough spot, one way or the other.
So are, I saw, are we going to be allowed to have a meeting before April 7th, or are our meetings canceled?
Our meetings, so the, you know, in a very long discussion with the board, our meetings are included in that. I looked at the things that are, we're only scheduled for one, like March 26th, I think it was coming up, and we could move that. And I think the next one after that, it occurred actually on April 7th.
7th, right.
Yeah, so we're only missing one, and I'll move all that topical information from the next one to that one. We're in pretty good shape that way.
I'm just wondering, in terms of making recommendations and assigning articles, can we just, you know, given the fact that we're, you know, in limbo here right now, I mean, is it easier to just say, we'll recommend them all from the floor?
I, my, Rich and I were talking about that before the meeting, my, I think, because the finance committee's obviously impacted by this, too.
Right.
I think it would be easier to say, because we need to have something put in the book about that.
Yep.
It would be much easier for us in, for decision-making to say, you know, that it would be made from the floor
Okay.
at a town meeting, and that would be very helpful to get this thing to publication.
I agree.
I think, well, we haven't even heard from.
No, I mean, there are other.
That's what I mean, so it's, so that being said, you know, that might be the best thing to do.
So, given that, you just really need a, you need a motion to approve the April 28th, 2020 town meeting warrant?
Yes.
Well, there's some open issues.
Yeah, that we want to discuss about finances.
Let's hear them.
So you used to have a approach where you'd go through from the beginning to the end, and go through and recommend and discuss your articles, but there are articles occurring at the end of the warrant that might impact decision-making about the front end of the warrant. And so, just to throw them out there.
CPA.
You've got the whole decision about the water investment infrastructure fund, that a certain percentage with the corresponding decrease on the CPA surcharge or an exemption.
Did they meet? Sorry to interrupt, but.
Yes, they did.
And what was the verdict?
They voted to recommend to the board of selectmen a, the residential exemption, 7-0, and unanimously, unanimously supporting that position. And so right now, in the draft warrant, I've presented both articles for your consideration. We've got to eliminate one or the other, or both, however you want to approach it, but one's a reduction and one's an exemption.
I think we, I'd make a motion that we eliminate the CPA surcharge reduction in this warrant. It's the second part of Article 16, and leave the residential exemption.
I'll second the motion.
What's numbers of those?
Article 16.
It's on page 18.
No, but I mean, on the article, what number?
Article 16.
16 is the exemption, yeah, and what's the other one?
No, they're both under 16.
Oh, they're both.
It was just a, one, we had to choose.
I just have this sheet, I haven't looked at the book.
My other, well, I guess we'll work on the motion first.
I guess I can add, while it's being looked up, right now, the language in the article says July 1, 2020, which is fiscal year '21, which is the other conflict that we may or may not be able to resolve, or might be resolved if we can reschedule things, if that were to happen. As you recall from the last meeting, the difficulty here is CPA changes require a 35-day notice to the town clerk. Right now, as things are structured, we don't have 35 days.
But can't notice it before it's approved at a town meeting?
No.
No. And so we would need to change that, and so this is the probably more difficult discussion of if we move forward on the WIF article effective July 1, 2020, that would be in advance of when this could occur, which would be July 1, 2021, so we have a one-year imbalance. And for sake of argument, let's use the 500,000 number we've been talking about, we'd be raising the WIF in 2021 for $500,000, but wouldn't have the reduction occurring in 2021, it would occur in 2022, you know, assuming that everything passes at a town meeting and on the ballots. Perhaps that self-corrects if we're able to reschedule some things. You could let, so your options are to see if that happens and take care of itself and do it all in 2021, if we could arrange that. You could allow it to go forward with that imbalanced, introducing the WIF in 2021 and the reduction in 2022. You could defer the WIF to 2022 so that they do align. Or you could keep it as-is with the imbalance, and in, you know, originally I was contemplating, we were talking about the wastewater capital reserve free cash of $500,000. Perhaps you could plug that in instead of a reserve as a reduction of tax rate to make sure that it's balanced in that year one as well. I can't with a little illustration, if people like pictures.
Yeah, that might work. Just based on Eric's head shaking.
Circles, that's a lot to try and keep track of.
This is going to be a complicated year to begin with.
Okay. And so this is an example of your free cash article is at the beginning, near the beginning of the warrant, and this is at the end, so whatever you decide here impacts how you might treat your free cash.
So where's the end of the warrant that you're talking about?
Well, this would be on Article 16. Actually, you do, I probably jumped the gun, you do have a motion on the table, Mr. Chairman. But if you adopt the residential exemption, right now, the motion was to drop the surcharge reduction.
Right.
And you'd be left with the exemption. And then the next question is, when do you want that exemption to occur? Under the current schedule of things, with the scheduled election and scheduled town meeting, it cannot occur on July 1, 2020. 2021 would be our first available date.
Didn't, didn't I see, didn't we talk about, we were going, we had like 452,000 in MEMA funds that we were getting, that we were going to put into capital stabilization? There's some reimbursements.
Yeah, we, that was actually for the roof. I want to say it was less than that. I want to say it was maybe $250,000, and that was to be able to do the roof work?
No, no.
No, it was like 400 or something.
The tornado, we, the.
Oh, the tornado money.
The roof is the old FEMA money, and this is the tornado money, is 452,000.
Right.
We have some options with that, but the easiest discussion topic was to let that fall to free cash and be an add-on to next year's free cash.
Next year's free cash.
Why wouldn't we use it?
It's uncertified, is it, it's uncertified yet, is it?
Well, no.
Well, it was reimbursement. That money was funded out of free cash, all those expenditures at the last town meeting, so.
So it would become available for the fall town meeting.
Does that help?
It does.
So why wouldn't we, I mean, why couldn't we apply that plus another 48,000 from some, or whatever the balance is?
Well, you could, and to my earlier point, we had been contemplating with some discussion about using 500,000 of free cash to a wastewater reserve. And there wouldn't seem to be some unanimous position on that, but you could use the 500,000 instead of putting it to the wastewater reserve to reduce the tax rate, which would offset the introduction of the WIF in FY '21, because it's a one-time issue. It's the imbalance of years. You introduce the WIF in '21, but you can't do your reduction until '22.
And to say reduce the tax rate, you're not really reducing it, because you're raising it on the WIF, so it's.
You're stopping it from increasing.
Yeah, I don't think you want to use that terminology.
It's a technical term of.
Yes.
Offsetting the increase.
Which is the cleanest way?
Yeah, you tell us.
Yeah.
You don't like my opinion, but we've set these things in motion, and I certainly understand the perspective of the board, especially without having tax rate increases, but we've lined these things up and done our best to reduce costs to this wastewater effort, and the time really is now if we're going to do this, and I'd hate to see us squander that chance. And so I would proceed, worst-case scenario, getting the WIF in place, and the worst-case scenario is you don't get the reduction to the following year, and then you can discuss whether or not you want to apply some level of funds to stopgap that one-year increase.
Well, let's act on the motion. Is that, is this going to be, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to have to make, take some action on that as well, right?
So when would we have to apply those funds? I'm still unclear on what you.
I'm, I'm still unclear on what you were saying.
'22.
If you want everything to remain in balance, the way this was proposed, with the current schedule, if we cannot change it, the reduction wouldn't happen until FY '22, which means you could take action on this year, FY '21, and use other available funds, whether it's this reimbursement money, or whether it's free cash, to ensure that there's no increase in the overall levy of taxes. And if you were to take that motion, I might not have the exact language for you tonight, but I can get it overnight and get it in for the printed warrant, with your understanding of adding it to one of our articles to reflect.
And that res, but that would resolve the timing thing regardless.
It would, yes.
So I'm, I'm in favor of doing that. But, at the same time, has that money already, I saw, I thought I saw it in here already in the free cash, has that already, have we already spoken for it?
No.
Okay, all right.
So what I, what I was contemplating was the $500,000 for the wastewater capital reserve, for which this board has had some discussion and hasn't decided what to do with that yet. That's the $500,000 that you would apply to balance out.
Okay.
Sounds good. So what would be required if we decided to use that half million dollars to offset the WIF, would be to, just to change the purpose of the free cash allocation?
I likely.
The description.
Likely would change the free cash article, which currently says, which was last presented to you, a wastewater reserve, and we'd change that to say, it's a term of art, reduce the tax rate.
Right, or, or, yeah, some appropriate wording.
Water infrastructure funding. Okay, Mikey, let's do this.
Sounds good.
Well, the motion that we have was just to get rid of one of the CPA.
Surcharge reduction portion of that article.
Correct. That's all that we have so far, is the motion, right? Is that what, you want to vote on that in isolation?
I'd like to ask, because I've asked for the impact of that, of what the remainder would be. My understanding, what, what is the impact of the $100,000 exemption?
So I did email that, and you have that, but I also brought it. To your point, Suckman Holcomb, it's not an evenly-applied application when you reduce, everybody gets the same benefit, but when you introduce the .78% WIF, that impacts different values of properties differently. And so the chart that I just passed out indicates that for those with a, if you had a property value of $100,000, which is, you know, probably not existing, that has a $22 savings. If you have a million-dollar property, that actually results in a $48 increase. The spot where it's relatively neutral is just about $400,000 value of home, has no tax impact. What I don't have ahead of the time, I could have enhanced this presentation to let you know the, the breakdown, but I suspect percentage-wise of a homes in Yarmouth, that probably represents a pretty high percentage of homes in Yarmouth, up to $400,000. But over that value, it is an increasingly net cost to higher-value homes.
The overall offset is, what's the total?
So this is the, it does in fact result in a, the exemption does in fact result in an overall tax levy, or tax, property tax charges of about a $500,000 savings, it's 498 and change.
Okay, so it's almost an even dollar swap.
Yeah, and then the .78% was the calculation, .78 represents a $500,000 add.
And just, just to go back to, I think you made the point during your presentations that, this is the first shot, that as we go down the line, the decision might change five years from now if, let's say, the, the board decided at that point that the, an increase or a changeover to a reduction in the CPA fund by one and a half percent was appropriate. The board could then eliminate this exemption and put in that, that.
You could, and that's to that point, then one of the key things that the Water Resources Advisory Committee was considering when it developed its financing plan was the very important concept of pre-funding our plan to smooth out the finances. And, and this pre-funding is this upcoming five-year period. And so, they were pretty clear in their financing plan that the WIF, the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund requirement to balance everything out was one and a half percent.
Uh huh.
This, we were, what we end up getting for the pre-funding, but that's only at the time where you're actually funding it, year six and subsequent. The pre-funding phase, the .78% is adequate for pre-funding, and to your point, there's so many pieces that have to shake out. Do we get better funding on any number of the funding sources? Do we get some grants? Do we get debt relief through the SRF that you heard the other night? All those things could improve our circumstances, and so you might not have to do that. So it's almost like a half-measure. You're doing what?
Right.
You're getting started, you're pre-funding, because of recognizing the importance of that, but on the other hand, you're also not overdoing it.
I think there was also an issue that I brought up with regard to, I'm trying to think about the example I brought up to Mark, and in fact, with regard to differences in approach and, and savings to some of the users that were being projected. But, you know, without those spreadsheets, I'm not sure that I could nail that down, but it was a substantial amount of savings to the users that was being projected, and I couldn't understand why that was occurring.
Uh huh.
Do you recall those?
I recall a discussion, I, I'll be honest with you, I can't recall how.
Was that related to the water consumption?
Yeah, it was, it related to the water consumption.
The minimum amount before it kicked in, you, there was a exemption threshold for water consumption?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think, hmm, now I don't remember the details.
It was designed such that small consumer entities.
It was on the betterment piece, the overall betterment would remain the same, it's just a matter of when we go to design that betterment program and who pays. You know, the total betterment came out to be 10 and a half million roughly, it's just the allocation of who pays that 10 and a half million, the total amount remains the same.
You know, it wasn't a matter of the total amount remaining the same, there was definite impact on the revenues that were being generated, that it created a, a loss situation. There's no point in dwelling on that at this stage. You know, I think we're, we're addressing this issue in Article 16, but we need to resolve that issue. I'll, I'll look it up when I get back, but I had raised that question and really wanted it addressed.
All right, and we prepared to vote on the motion.
So the change in that would be for two, the last sentence would be 2021?
No.
Right now, you have a motion on just removing the surcharge reduction.
Correct.
That language.
The second paragraph of Article 16, to delete that. That's a motion, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
So, Mr. Chairman, following up on that discussion, I guess what I'd be looking for is a motion or some discussion on adopting the residential exemption, changing the date to 2021, tentatively, pending our upcoming schedule, and in turn, also supporting the motion to amend Article 10, which is your free cash and other funding sources article, but currently shows what was previously presented to you on page 16 of the warrant, transfer to wastewater capital reserve, to change that to say, a, you know, I'll have to come up the language, but something to the effect of, to reduce the property tax rate $500,000.
So moved. The only thing about that, though, is I'm wondering on a separate but related question, based on, based on how it goes, whether or not we want to put Article 16 before, do we want to move this up in the warrant, so that it's?
I would suggest you leave it.
Okay.
These are all arranged in one sequence for wastewater discussion.
Okay.
If you start spreading it out across town meeting, we will have a disjointed discussion for sure. But, but we can certainly, when we type up the detailed explanation of each of these requests, that would certainly be mentioned.
Did I second?
Yes.
I seconded it.
Do you want to vote on those together, or separately?
I think they go together, right? His, his motion?
Yeah.
Motion is just for one component of it, right?
My recommendation was that you vote a motion to adopt the exemption effective July 1, 2021, and if your inclination is to balance that funding out, to reduce, to change Article 10, wastewater capital reserve amount, to reduce the tax rate.
So we're modifying two articles?
Yes.
16.
Okay, so the first one is simply to change the date to July 1, 2021, correct?
And adopt, and recommend it.
In what article?
In Article 16.
16, yeah.
Is that all we got to do on 16, is change the date?
It's all one motion, though, they, it affects both articles.
I know, but why don't we just do them separately? It'd be a lot easier, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so we have, can we have a motion in a second on just 16, to change the date to 20?
I move that we recommend the, recommend and adopt the language in Article 16 as proposed with the change of the date to July 1, 2021.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so that, you see your name on this.
Now, Article 10, the free cash article?
We got to go back to the free cash one. Okay, Rich?
And so, I have some items on the free cash article, but perhaps you could address the second part of that recommendation first.
Yeah, that's what I want to hear. So, what's the motion on 10 now, to, to balance that out?
I'd recommend one of your board members have a motion to change the second-to-last item that says, transfer to wastewater capital reserve to, say, to reduce the tax rate.
Is that, those words come after the language that's there?
No, it's in place of.
In place of.
We're not going to transfer it, we're going to reduce, use it to.
Subject to legal counsel review.
What's the DOR reaction going to be to that?
That's fine.
You're not worried about it?
Just place on the tax rate recap to accommodate reductions to the tax rate directly.
So we're gonna, so that $500,000 line item is going to say, reduce tax rate?
Which is kind of a farce, but.
It really, I mean, people are going to be so, they're going to be glazed over at this point anyway.
Have a good explanation.
No, I think we can, I think we can explain that.
And I can, I can give you the names of five people, when they hear those words, reduce tax rate, they're going to perk right up, like a two-year-old on Christmas morning, and they're going to run to those microphones.
Yeah, I think in the explanation, you're going to have to make it very, very clear what that.
Absolutely.
What that is for. Because you don't want to be in the position of establishing, as a general practice, the idea, at least, and then putting it on town meeting like this. I just think it's, you know, this, and like I said, I.
You could always vote to not do that.
And do, and then do what?
We need to get a doc.
I think we should just ask town council how flexible we can be, because perhaps we could write, reduce tax rate, and then underneath it, something that says, as an offset to the increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with what Tracy just laid out.
I was just writing to reduce the ra, the tax rate to fund the.
Wastewater.
Wastewater infrastructure fund.
WIF.
For one year.
Is it a, is it a reduction to the 2.5% levy increase that we impose every year?
It's really to, to fund the first year wa, wastewater infr, infrastructure fund.
Yes, until, until.
You actually are, to your question, buying down the tax levy.
So.
Your tax levy was $50 million, after the application of this article, you're only raising 49.5.
For one year.
For one year.
So I think that will go a long way in helping to clarify what's actually helping. And somebody said it before, this is a, a decrease to the increase.
Right.
It's not a task re, it's not a reduction. I mean, we go through these semantics with the school and their, and their cuts every year. You're not cut, you're not cutting, you're decreasing the increase, and that's exactly what this is.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I think it's important to explain it, and if you can explain it in the actual text, more power to us.
So who's going to explain that article? Is that going to be you, Mr. Forrest?
Well, just, why not simply say, why not simply say, to fund the first-year wastewater infrastructure fund surcharge?
I think as a DOR, right? Isn't it, I mean, it's, it's technical how they.
Yeah. I think if you make your motion subject to review by town council, it might be sufficient.
So we attack that onto the motion?
If you have any significantly different requirements, then we could let you know, but.
Is there a motion on the table?
The sentiment.
Did you do a motion?
Um, no.
No, because Norm was thinking about adding some language after reducing the tax.
Rather than reduce the tax rate, I would just simply say, to fund the first-year wastewater infrastructure fund surcharge.
I think we have to be a little bit flexible, because if the Department of Revenue doesn't allow that, and town council doesn't allow that.
Yeah, I think we could flag that with council, subject to review, and wording suggestions by town council. I think that's how.
We certainly have.
Would you be okay, Norm, adding that?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I'll second that.
Who made it, though?
Norm did.
Oh, okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
That's just on that line item, correct?
Great.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that passes unanimously.
And then, further on that article, Mr. Chairman, to Suckman Post's earlier comments.
Came prepared tonight, Rich.
I took the liberty of taking your previously-presented slides on the budget and on free cash utilization, put them on this list. The first column being what's been last proposed to you, and the second column being some potential changes. Of course, you can make any changes you'd like, otherwise to my suggestion here, but it became pretty clear last week, as we are finalizing the warrant and the budget preparation, that we have some significant challenges ahead of us with regards to our current situation. As you know, our local receipts are about $16 million of our 80-plus-million-dollar general fund budget, and of that $16 million, it includes things such as motor vehicle excise, it includes things such as the rooms excise, and includes things such as the meals excise, all which could be significantly impacted by a decline in tourism or visitors to Yarmouth. In addition, we do have various town activities currently shut down for an indefinite amount of time, particularly our golf operation, will be incurring some level of loss, which at the moment, with the weather, look to be a promising spring season. And so we would anticipate that there's some impacts, I don't know, can't sit here and tell and explain to you what I, what the, the extent of those impacts might be, but the thought process being, to the extent we have the ability to air back on a couple things, we could do that, and instead of talking about capital stabilization, add them to our unreserved stabilization to help mitigate whatever those impacts might be. With the understanding, we also have that tornado relief money that might be available to us to help mitigate that as well.
I think we need to talk about the Finance Committee's actions and this $200,000 that is still listed for the. for the police department shooting trailer. I'm not sure the rest of the board is aware of the vote the finance committee took to remove that $200,000 from the, from that line item.
I was not aware.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I was not aware.
On February 19th, at the finance committee's meeting, they made a four-to-three vote to remove the $200,000 from the police department shooting trailer and put it into capital stabilization. The primary reason, as it was told to me, was they are starting to have a growing concern over our, over our capital, future capital needs. And I realize that, you know, this is a small percentage of the, of the big picture, but, you know, it was their feeling that this money would better serve sitting in the capital stabilization fund. And they did take that vote, who indicated to me I would be hearing from the chairman. I have not, but anyway.
I, I think he was planning on having a further discussion with the board, with his board. I did notify him today, though, that the Board of Health has put a seven, a three-week suspension on that. So they'll reconvene again on April 7th or thereabouts. But I know he, he was going to bring that back up.
Doesn't mean that we have to agree to it.
Oh, no, that's true, absolutely, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there that that was, that was the action that they took. So, I mean, maybe for now, we...
Were there any other items on this list, or just that specific?
Not that I was told of. It was just that one specifically.
So, that was prior, that vote was prior to them coming here to us the last time?
Yes, and it never came up.
It was the night before, I believe.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Well, so they, is that because of the concern about capital? I mean, aren't they two separate issues?
Again, I, it was conveyed to me that they are, that the finance committee is having growing concerns over the county's cap, the town's capital needs, and this was a, an effort on their part by transferring this money back to the capital stabilization fund specifically to start to build those coffers for future need.
And this recommendation reduces that number even more. Well, perhaps could we get, could we, as a board, get some type of update from them as to their position on this?
Sure.
You said they were going to revisit this.
They, they were. That was the, the, when I had asked about that, and, you know, the issue about why it didn't come up during the board meeting, I believe, my recollection of the conversation was it was going to be revisited at a future time.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I still have a problem with it not even being mentioned. You know, I understand there was a division among the committee, but to not even bring it up in their presentation to us, how do you do that? So, I mean, I just, I, maybe we do nothing with it right now. I just, I just brought it up because I was surprised to see it still there.
There was further debate about with some of the members, if the, if the motion that they made, they could unilaterally move the item to that to present at the town meeting, but it's the Board of Selectmen that actually set the conditions on the warrant that'll go to the town meeting. So, the best I communicated to them was you could make your recommendation to the board, and they can take that under advisement and do what they want with it.
But this is just a piece of that. There's a, there's money in another article as well.
There is a capital budget that had an article.
Right, and so what I'm bringing to your attention, notwithstanding, perhaps that's a piece of this, but I think we certainly would be prudent to set aside some funds, not necessarily in capital stabilization, but you could do that as well. But we do think we're going to have some impacts that we're going to have to, and hopefully, my thought process is hopefully these aren't long-term impacts, but we might actually be seeing some fiscal impacts in FY '21 that initially FY '21 looked like a pretty good year for us budget-wise. Finally, but now we're going to be impacted by this situation, and what can we do to mitigate that?
Well, we'll see impacts in free cash for FY '20, most likely. Because, you know, right now, receipts are being affected for restaurants, hotels, et cetera, leading up to June 30th. So the June 30th, 2020 certified free cash, where we may have become accustomed to a certain level, is going to be reduced.
That too.
And, and depending on the nature of, of how this, this whole thing, the coronavirus issue turns out, how long it goes on, it may, I mean, the longer it goes on, the less, the more impact it has on summer reservations. And, and that time period, July, August, September, is a significant one in terms of receipts, of tax receipts. I don't think it'll affect automobile excise to any significant degree.
Well, what will affect motor vehicle excises is the stock market and bonuses.
Right. I mean, you know, I, I took a look at the local receipts going back to 2004, '05, and '06, and the last downturn that occurred in that time period. And, and our, our local receipts dropped by over $1 million in, in one or two years, and they started climbing back very slowly. So, you know, I, I think we're, we're probably looking at, if, if nothing else, as a substantial reduction in free cash, and, you know, whether that translates into a significant budget issue, we probably won't know until we close out the, the 2020 fiscal year and get some idea of how long this thing is going to go on.
Well, I think you've heard me say in the past, based on my experience looking at things with different communities over the last 20 years, what we're trying to protect against is a moderate and a significant decline in estimated receipts. And I define that as anywhere between 10% and 20%. 20% being, you know, maybe, you know, we'd like to think a worst-case scenario, be prepared for a 20% drop in estimated receipts, and then a moderate decline, and I'm not sure where we fall on this, could be usually around a 10% decrease in estimated receipts. So what's 10% of $16 million is 1.6 million. We've got on the bottom of my sheet there, I put down how much we have, 3-point-something. 4.4 million projected at the moment. And so we've got a few years that what we have would get, carry us through, but what's the impact on golf? What's the impact on free cash? You know, so, you know, is the prudent action to set something additional aside now if we can. So we're talking about, you know, protecting against those 10% or 20% declines. And then giving this full circle to your usual annual discussion on how much free cash is too much, and how do you set your budgets? Remember, this year's budget, following selectmen's guidance, our budgeted estimated receipts were 95% of the prior year actual. And so why are towns at 90% or at 85%? That's part of the protection against the decline in the future budget cycle. And so at 95%, we don't have a lot of wiggle room for a decline.
So just so that I understand this, what you're asking the board, or at least making the board aware of, is your recommendations that we end the fiscal year with a more robust, unencumbered free cash, correct?
Stabilization fund.
Okay.
Unreserved stabilization.
All right, so we're looking at more money.
So perhaps repurposing some of these requests and putting them in the unreserved.
Right. I'm assuming we can revisit them in the fall if, if we felt that we're...
Sure, I mean, you just vote money, you know, if everything comes through, fine, then you could reapproach, you know, or not, either way, you could...
So what does this schedule represent? I guess I'm not, I don't follow exactly what you're...
So the first column represents the free cash requests that were previously discussed and submitted to you. The second column represents, you know, just my, my first pass without a detailed discussion of each line item, where we could certainly make a change and put it to unreserved, with the exception of that wastewater capital reserve now is going to the reduce the tax rate business, which remains, so you got the capital stabilization fund. Perhaps you don't do that, and you put it into unreserved stabilization. You've got the LCP. We do need an amount to get started, but we certainly don't need the full amount. So I split that in half. And we have, right now, we are going to need $350,000 for C and D for this fiscal year, which leaves, and I've been planning for about, you know, with snow and ice, but that, so far, is looking pretty good.
Right.
That means $75,000 we haven't allocated yet. And so those couple of items, and any other items you want to discuss, could be re-appropriated, repurposed to unreserved stabilization.
Why is the C and D popping up again? I thought that was a one-time...
It's been addressed for FY '21, where we actually have increased the budget, budgeted appropriation in FY '21. That was why we had a $300,000 increase in C and D. But it's been the issue of increasing volume. The fees recup, the fees cover the cost, but if, it's just like the recreation programs. The more participation you get, the more cost there is. And so our budgeted appropriation...
But if the fees offset the cost, why are we having to take real cash and dedicate it to C and D?
Because our budgeted appropriation didn't account for the increased tonnage. It was budgeted at a certain level, and we've exceeded that level. And exceeded it now for several years in a row, to, to your point, which is why we have to supplement it with free cash. So even though the money's coming in to cover the costs, it's not available as an appropriation to spend.
So where is that money ending up? It's not coming back to us as free cash. It's ending up in an enterprise fund?
No, sanitation activity is in our general fund.
It's in the general fund, so it's ending up in the, in the general fund.
So we got the receipts for the increased activity this year, which will be part of next year's free cash certification. So we're just basically making the timing equal. We're using it now to offset the costs in the revenues.
Do you understand that yet, Norm? Because I don't. If we're charging by the ton, no matter what, how much the tonnage goes up, why don't, why don't we have the money to cover it if...
We do have the money. We do get the receipts.
Yeah.
But at the beginning of the year, you have to ask, come up with a budget, and you, and town meeting has to vote a ceiling on the expense side of how much you can spend. We can't exceed that expense regardless of how much better you've performed and actually collected receipts to offset it.
Well then, why are we budgeting the additional expense?
We are.
But why?
In FY '21.
Why?
Because we have several years in a row of this increased activity.
Well, well, and, you know, if we didn't budget for the increase in expense, and then the revenue rolled in to match that in, any increase, why wouldn't that offset?
Because you can't use receipts, once your tax rate is set, to fund increased expenses. You need town meeting authorization to vote your appropriation. So we introduced that additional appropriation in FY '21, so you wouldn't be here next year having this conversation, the third year in a row.
This is a good problem.
Yeah.
Right, and it, and, you know, I hate to say it, but our C and D facility is closed down for the moment, so...
Yeah, which is going to impact us again.
Right. Well, I think this is a good plan. So, if you're looking at endorsement from the board, I'm, I'm one member that likes being prepared for the potential impact of the coronavirus having an impact on town revenues, and making sure that we allocate, or at least have available, free cash to deal with that. So I think this is a smart move, so...
Well, I support it in theory. I think that I would like to withhold my vote until we hear from the finance committee on their recommendations.
Well, right now, the $200,000 is in this proposal, and then you have to take, and $500,000 is in there. So, so instead of 814, it's really 314, 894.
Well, it could be 1,014, 894. So if we take 5, 75, 500, 250, and 60, I'm assuming that's the... Where, where does 814? These, these things highlighted in yellow, Rich, are the things you're suggesting to remove. Is that true?
Right, I guess maybe an easier approach here would be, because we don't know what might happen between that. We might even have a need this year to do something. So perhaps an easier path would be to suggest you could vote and address the things that you can, and the things that you can't, you don't suggest, or put in the warrant, and you'll have unspent free cash going into town meeting. And you can make a motion from the floor to either use it for this year, because we need it because of the situation we're in, or if you don't, then you can make the motion from the floor
Do you agree?
Well, perhaps what we could do is, is, is leave it unchanged for now, and then as time unfolds, at a future meeting, we can revisit that. Even though it'll be published in the warrant, you can come out with a, with a new page prior to that that would have a reflection as to what you wanted to do based on what we knew at that time. And then, but after the motion from the floor, it's a little bit sloppy, but it does address the issue of the unknown right now. You know, you'll have, you'll know more probably in six weeks than you know today.
I guess that's kind of what I was suggesting, except that you would print in the warrant what you do know, and have the understanding that you have unallocated and unspent free cash. And then when you get to town meeting, you're proposing not to change anything that's been printed, but to add something.
Yeah, but at that point in time, we're going to be taken away. You know, or the appearance that taking away from, I mean, if we, I mean, if we print the proposed use right now the way it is, we already know that we're not going to be able to fund all that. Something, something's going to have to go to be able to make sure we're fiscally, you know, smart right now.
Well, we know the 634 is going to be reduced by $450,000.
The 634.
The second line.
That's been, no, that's been spent. It's been allocated.
I know it's been spent, but it's going to come back to us. I have $450,000 with that.
But we can't spend it until it's certified.
Let us see. 810, doesn't it?
Next year. Okay. Well, I think if we're going to be safe, well, we already know the $500,000 is going to go. You know, taking the capital stabilization is in direct conflict with what the finance committee feels. So perhaps we need to look somewhere else. I, I wish we had this information before we have to print the warrant.
The finance committee's discussion is also before we're in their current situation.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And it, I would just like, if it's something that we're not going to fund, not to have it printed, because then it's...
I agree.
It just sets up for...
Right, so you would delete those two line, those two lines? The wastewater capital reserve and the capital stabilization. Is that what you're suggesting?
No.
What do you suggest?
I mean, if we, if we, if we take, if Eric's comments about the finance committee saying that they didn't want to spend the $200,000 because they wanted to put more towards capital stabilization, and then we take more away from capital stabilization without hearing from them, I think I would prefer to hear from them to see what their thoughts were on their vote before we do that. So, I don't know.
You know, with the introduction of a fall town meeting, you could decide to not act on any or all of these, with the caveat that we'll revisit them towards the fall, and we will know everything we need to know.
Which is not unusual with other towns that do have fall town meetings.
Yeah.
That's often where they will make many of these decisions off their...
So we could take any... So we could take any items in here that are not consistent with everybody, take them off. And then, at this town meeting, we could put it all towards unrestricted stabilization.
Whatever on, on--
And then if we find that we're in a better position at the end of this, then we could take that and apply it.
One of the things I would just caution, and once it goes into stabilization, to get it out is a two-thirds vote at town meeting. To get it out of free cash, it's a simple majority.
Oh, so we could just leave--
You could leave it as free cash, and it would stay there, and it's not uncommon either.
I'd agree. I mean, you know, given what's going on and our, you know, our, the, the, our inability to be able to, you know, make reasonably timely decisions, I don't know that, I think flexibility is the, is the best thing we can have. And if pushing these things out to the fall, just putting the money in that piggy bank and, and the whole, waiting to make those decisions.
You mean this whole list?
I think the whole list.
I don't think with the, with the--
I think some of it we could add.
It might be like some of the grants for the substance abuse and nursing program. But the vast majority of these things, I mean, in the grand scheme, if we pushed it out six months, it's probably more like nine-month deployment, but like anything else, we could make do.
Just the yellow highlighted things could be postponed?
I think we could take from the vehicle, equipment, maintenance down and act on those. And leave--
Including the vehicle and equipment and maintenance?
Yep. I don't want to shoot yourself in the foot and not have the funds either. That's going to cost us more money.
Well, I would like to hang on to the vehicle and equipment maintenance, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think if we, if we acted on the vehicle maintenance all the way down to the OSHA training and left the big, basically the bigger dollar amounts other than wastewater.
Why not simply reduce all of them by 50%? So that, so that on July 1st, 50% becomes available, and the remaining 50% gets designated in the fall if, if it's available.
I'm not sure about that. Tracy, are you proposing eliminating the OPEB funding too?
For now.
Oh.
Yeah.
I think that's a--
I think that's a--
Any wise pound for--
I would recommend against that.
Okay, well, we can add it.
Keep it in.
So, OPEB, and then take off wastewater cap, no, capital, that has to stay, right?
How is the wastewater going to come off if we just say, vote it down?
I know, just talking, talking out loud. Give me a second.
Right, the wastewater would be added in.
So we would just be removing capital stabilization--
LCP.
LCP. And I think possibly we should leave some of that to get started.
Well, he's only suggesting--
He's already reduced it to, by, by 50%.
And the unwritten, the unallocated, we would stay unallocated. It's not the 75 grand.
Just make a motion and do it that way.
Well, we're really not saving that much. I'm just wondering if that's going to be enough to get us, get us through.
We have--
Well, Rich, that 350 is not going to be spent all on July 1st either.
No, the 350 is needed for this year. We are currently over expended, and we're projected to over expend that budget line item by 350,000. That's why that's needed for FY '20.
As far as the, the trailer goes, if that was put off until the fall, there's, they're not, they don't have all the funds collected at this point to be able to actually purchase it, so it wouldn't impact that.
No, they're, they're just trying to get some funds appropriated such that they can go to future donors and say the town's got this amount of money invested in it.
So, but they'd still have the 100,000 from the other fund? And we could, we could reassess this in the fall?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'd hate to have that money earmarked, and then we're in a, we have to actually make budget cuts for something that they're not even going to purchase yet. So I guess, I guess my motion would be to re, to remove, oh, see, I hate to even remove the capital stabilization, because of the--
You're just postponing it till the fall.
Yeah, don't think of it that way.
You're going to get, yeah, the money will come back. It'll come back as free cash.
All right, so, so let's remove from this--
Postpone.
From this warrant and postpone to the fall the 250,000 in capital stabilization, 60,000 from the local comprehensive plan development, and the 200,000 from the PD trailer. And does anybody have an appetite of cutting the OPEB in half? Or should we leave that the full amount? Do you want to leave it?
It's a big nut we gotta--
But again, you could add that--
We could add it in the fall, I'm just saying I don't want to get stuck short. I just don't, do we make a interest? Is it beneficial for us to front hold that?
Yeah, C and D, the, we do, coming up for a bond rating review.
Okay, all right.
The question we have, are you fully funding your ARC? And with this appropriation, we are.
It's a full funding, yeah.
And we get a better discount rate.
Right.
Keep our liability low by having that discount rate.
Yeah, I wouldn't touch it then. No, because we're not that far from getting a AAA.
Well, that money that goes into that account anyways could be future allocated.
Is there, is there some way we can bundle all the rest of the items? And allocate funds on an as-needed basis, but reduce the total by 50% at this stage?
Well, I think you can't sign contracts, like with some of these things, you can't sign contracts without, without having the money.
Some of these things, where you have to execute a contract. You can't execute half the services and get, and then you can't let a contract unless you've got the funding lined up. And it's, you know, part of the problem we have is a municipality.
So that, that, that motion I made saves 510,000. Is that a comfortable enough amount?
Enough cushion? Is that enough of a cushion, Rich? Then I'm cool with that.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to take 250 from capital stabilization, and 60 from local comprehensive plan development, and 200 from the PD shooting trailer. Did I leave anything out? That comes to 4, 510,000, right?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on that. Any further discussion? Norm, you have something?
Uh, no, I think I'm all right with that. So, yeah, so it comes up, we end up with 514 instead of-- Yep, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, on Article 10 then, just as a word of clarification, if you're inclined to move forward on that, then on page 15 under Article 10, the bottom line, PD shooting trailer would be struck in the filed printed version. LCP development, the next line up from that will now read $60,000.
What article number are you on?
Article 10.
10, hold on a second.
Page 15.
Okay, give me that again, Rich, please.
The last line on page 15--
Yeah, remove that, right?
--police department shooting-- Would be removed. The line above that, the amount would be amended to 60,000.
Yep.
And on page 16, the last line, transfer to cap, to capital stabilization would be struck.
Yep. So that just balances out what we just did.
Yep.
So if you're inclined to take action on the rest of that, you now know what it would be saying.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I don't understand. Hold on a second. The numbers don't match up.
Okay, what?
They don't because they're not necessarily reflected all in this one article. For example, the C and D, the 350 is the very first article of our town meeting historically, because it's an article addressing current year shortfalls.
But like, the bridge water wasn't on that one we just voted for.
Because those aren't free cash.
It's a different source.
FEMA funds. This article isn't just free cash.
Okay, I got you. I was trying to figure that one out.
Oh, I see, they're labeled.
Yeah, it's just species.
So the attic insulation and the--
Okay.
And send the motion on, in the language of the article as well.
Okay, we have a motion to change local comprehensive plan development from 120,000 to 60,000, remove the following, the next item, which is police department shooting trailer.
So moved.
That's 200,000, and take out the last item, transfer to capitals, capital stabilization fund, 250,000, to delete that, those items total 510,000. So Tracy, you made a motion on that. We have a second?
Eric seconded it.
Eric seconded it?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, any discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's a four zero vote on Article 10.
I think it was represented the changes I thought you might want to contemplate, and so now the warrants, the rest of it's yours.
That takes care of your issues, your recommendations, I should say. I thought we were going to hold the rest, no?
So what you want to do with it, if you want to make all the recommendations from the floor, or unless there's something that you think you're good with now, we can go through that if you'd like? Otherwise, we can hold it, make a recommendation at the future meeting.
I mean, if we're going to just put that on there anyway, I think we should just wait and go through them in detail prior, after we get all the information that we need. It's better to probably do it later than--
It's not a big issue at town meeting to--
I think that the big questions that were still remaining, we've addressed. Is that correct?
There is, yes.
So.
I'm trying to think about the, and, you know, we don't want to get into an extended discussion, but it's, you know, the what-ifs of, of the timing of the town meeting. If it gets postponed into June, then what does that do as far as fall? And, you know, what are you going to have?
We'd probably go on a, on a 1/12 budget until we, until we had a new budget.
Yeah, the 1/12.
1/12 budget.
Yeah, but it'd only be for like a, maybe a month or less, right? In the meeting in June.
And the Board of Selectmen at that point, if that, they're, they call that meeting at any time, after the 30 days.
Yeah. Yeah. Who knows, it may have favorable impacts as well on the, on the, on the school building funding. You know, the financial impacts and the municipal markets. I don't know.
Never know.
There's a lot of, lot of, lot of things in there.
Well, pushing that off too, when people are going to be financially impacted, when we have to get that, we have to get that. That one question passed is, is worrisome.
Yeah.
So, and if that doesn't, we are going to have a whole nother issue on our hands in terms of--
That's next year's problem.
Well, it's not, it's not going to be a small problem.
I know.
So.
I'd rather think about it next year than this year.
I agree.
Is there any debt this year that we have for that?
For the school?
Yeah.
It's a small amount, short-term. We're carrying, I thought it was like $250,000, I think?
Okay.
So how much is it more? No?
Not even that.
Not even that much?
Has Dennis got their, their 250 reimbursement on their warrant?
It was the way it was supposed to go. I haven't had a chance to confirm that yet, so.
Never going to forget about that.
Where's that going to go? Is that going to go into free cash?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't spend it all, so soon.
You get that right.
The only, the only other issue that's going to be a big issue for us to take a position on will be the DHY.
Yeah.
We'll have to take a vote on that. And, you know, thinking about it, really, the only issue I've, I have is the fact that when we first went into this, we were told that the funding would be part and parcel with the article. They'd be brought together at the same time. And now that we're going to be separating that, I think it makes me a little bit nervous going forward with the article without having the funding. But--
What do you, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, when we first started talking about this, it was kind of portrayed that the funding for the initial build would go at the same time as the agreement, so that way the people would have the discussion all at once. And now, it's kind of evolved to the point where we're just talking about the agreement, and then, once that agreement's passed, the funding, who knows what it will be? It won't be up to us.
So, it's a separate slope of discussion, but we've got to have the discussion. I'm of the opinion, and, and spent some back and forth with some of the other towns, but my thought on the matter is, you're voting the agreement, and the agreement becomes effective, which allows the commissioners to move forward and bond, authorizes them, because they have their power to bond, to borrow the money. Theoretically, you know, you get the commission form, they're up and running July 1. July 2nd, they can borrow the money and send you a bill for your next year's budget to pay that debt service. There's no funding vote by each of the three town meetings.
Right.
Within the legislation, it's clear that that assessment from them gets added to your tax levy, just like the Cape Cod Commission.
So when we, okay, so what you're saying is our initial thought of how the process was going to work is not the way it would have ever worked?
Yeah, I don't recall that discussion, but my understanding is, you know, we're voting to join DHY, and that's your decision point. When you, if you decide that, you're deciding to allow the commissioners to proceed to build a plan.
Okay.
And you get the bill for it, and it's added to your levy. And so it's really incumbent upon us to have figured out our financing plan. So you offset that add to the levy accordingly, which is what we've done.
Right.
Well, it's more to it than that, actually, because of the, the amount of the expenditure with regard to the collection system. The collection system cost is, is much more substantial.
Close 70%.
And will require the same sort of process.
So we're talking about the plant.
Two separate years.
The DHY issue is just the plant.
Right, I understand.
We will have bond authorizations for our collection system.
Right. It's just a little bit more fragmented.
Yeah.
And both towns are still moving forward with the agreement on their warrant.
As far as I know, yeah.
What's next?
All right. So that brings us to--
We have to sign the one.
Yeah, you have to have a motion to approve as drafted.
We've closed it, right?
No.
Well, it was, it would have been closed back in January 28th or thereabouts.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just need a motion to approve as presented this evening for the amendments that have been made.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to sign this.
Yes.
Is it just one page?
One signature page, yeah.
Okay.
Did you sanitize this? Yeah, I did. Thank you. They put some coffee on it. Must have seen this.
Do you want to wipe the pen? No, I don't have anything. We can move on to minutes, I think.
No, gender review. No, minutes is before, before that.
Minutes are up.
I move the minutes of November 14th.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Gender review.
On vacation till April 7.
So, 24th was our next scheduled meeting.
Right, so what I'll do is--
Now, we're, we're supposed to have a budget presentation with FINCOM, CBC.
Yeah, the hearing will move to the 7th if that's a, if that's a night of action for the budget. The charter just indicates that prior to town meeting-- The charter just indicates that prior to town meeting, the administrator will have a budget hearing with FinCom.
Move to the 7th on those?
Yeah, yep.
So there's no specific time?
No.
You know, this is all, you know, last year we had a pre-town meeting.
Yeah.
Yes. We had a couple of them, I think.
I mean, it was helpful to get some of the budget, particularly with some of the confusion that we've got.
The feedback was very good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Depending upon how things roll out, we can decide how we want to do that. I'm not averse to doing that again during one of the open weeks. Certainly, I think it was very well received last year.
But you may want to link that to the final date on the town meeting.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff up in the air and-
And it would probably be very helpful to do that, yeah.
Right. So we should be thinking about that, but make that decision once the date is finalized.
Yeah, I mean, for right now, you've got that school vacation week on April 21st that's open. Everything's unknown beyond April 7th right now, so.
So pretty much everything on the 24th will go off on the 7th.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan, I think.
Then the 14th, assuming we're able to meet, then we have a light compact presentation and CEDC goals in support of wastewater.
Yeah.
And special events.
So you're saying at this point, the 24th has to be postponed?
Yes, by the board directive to us.
You're talking about the board of health?
The board of health, yes.
I had a question on that, not to get territorial, but do they have the ultimate say, or does the board of selectmen have the ultimate say as to what activities can exist or not exist? And has anybody talked to town council about that? I'd be curious to know.
No, I, if you'd want, I can go down that road, but this has been declared a public health emergency.
No, I get that. I just want to, I just want to know for my own edification what-
You might want to send around chapter and verse, just so-
Yeah, we were, it was explained to us, the normal emergency management situation, that we were not in charge of this, is how it was explained to us, so. But I'll follow up with you on that.
I mean, I'm not suggesting I would change anything, I just want to know the answer to that.
Yeah, so, so the problem becomes, if we tried to do something remote, technologically, it's really problematic, because you gotta, you gotta allow for a public participation component of it.
We don't even need to have three people in this room, we can all be on satellites.
Should be able to be at home, we should be able to call in.
Yeah. And then, secondly, we don't really want to encourage people to leave their homes to make an additional trip that-
Except us.
Except for us, right? Yeah.
Norm was big on remote participation.
Select board lives matter.
No, we can be anywhere now.
We should start a hashtag.
Make sure we can have a business. Oh, shoot, we missed the parade.
I think there's going to come a day in which that'll end up being the case, will be that, we'll have that kind of technology available.
I'm going with like, what, 2030?
I don't know, I think it'll be here sooner than that.
It exists, it exists now, we just, we're not, we're just not an adapter, or an adopter of the technology.
It's not going to be cable television on 2030.
Yeah.
There's got to be a way.
So where are we on the agenda here?
Moving on.
We were doing it 20 years ago.
Individual items, does anyone have anything? Individual items? No.
For me, I just like the idea of Mr. Chairman of making sure that we just have this coronavirus up front every meeting, just-
That's what I told him.
Yeah, so I appreciate that, I think that's a good idea.
No, and I agree, I always believe that Mark was very adamant that we had to get something going on that, and I certainly agreed with him then, and I do now, and I also was conferencing this same thing with Dan. I think we have to, on an ongoing basis, whatever the updates are, good, bad, or in-between, let people know right up front what we know. And I think that'll go a long way to preparing them for dealing with this, and also to anticipate what they shouldn't be doing, so I appreciate that input, and so that's what we're going to do from now on, right at the beginning of the meeting, if we have any updates on that, we'll go forward right away. Okay, so consent agenda.
Yeah, on the consent agenda, there's the standard donations, and a request to solicit at the Landville-
Is that safe? I saw that. Is that, is that safe? I'm not trying to hinder them.
I'm going to say that that probably should be deleted, we will not allow that to occur.
I mean, just for their own, maybe we can, maybe we can ask them for an alternate date.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
I wouldn't be comfortable right now having the kids in there.
Okay, so let's pull that one out of the consent agenda.
There should be two of those.
And then we'll move the consent agenda without those items.
Not to discourage them from asking again, but I don't-
No, understood, we'll explain that to them, no question about it, yep.
Consent agenda as amended.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda as amended and approved unanimously brings us to town administrator updates. Do you have anything else, Dan?
I do. There's correspondence that was generated by town council on the enforcement resolution or order from the governor's office, and as you heard tonight, the health director has been out already visiting some of our establishments. But this one-page document kind of synthesizes what the order does related to prohibiting gatherings of more than 25 people and on-premise consumption of food and drink. So I, the sense that I get from the restaurant community and whatnot, they're kind of grappling through that, but they've already started to make those, those moves towards that order. So that begins tomorrow on the 17th. Community civic, public leisure, faith-based events, sporting events with spectators, concerts, conventions, fundraisers, parades, fairs, and festivals include all that. And then, the above neighborhood events and other similar events and activities are prohibited if more than 25 people will be gathered in a single room or a single space at any one time. So there's, on this particular topic, there's been a lot of discussion about workplaces and whatnot, and it's been kind of relayed to us that individual workplace is like an office environment. It's not, it does not cover to that, so that's why you're not seeing that. But certainly things like where uncontrolled amounts of the public could come in, like an auditorium or a stadium or a large conference room, and gymnasiums, for instance, or gym clubs, that's why they're included in that. But for now, workplaces are not, general workplaces like offices and whatnot are not covered by that. And then on the next page, it talks about alcohol consumption, and there's also language here from the ABCC on that, that on Tuesday, March 17, 2020, midnight tonight, the on-premise sale and consumption of alcohol is prohibited in restaurants, bars, hotels, clubs, veterans' clubs, continuing care communities, pub breweries, farm series pouring permittees, manufacturers' pouring permittees, and general on-premise permittees. So this is pretty extensive, and never thought in my lifetime I'd see something this broad based on commerce.
I'd like to also, I know I had mentioned to you before, I talked about it earlier, about helping those in need. I'd also like to see if there's something that the town can do, and perhaps this is something that we'd get reimbursed from many years from now, but in a way to help these businesses. I mean, maybe it's a, I don't know if we have the authority, and what type of dollar amount we're talking for tax waivers or something of the sorts. I know, I know, but, you know, not helping them now, and they're not in business two years from now, isn't going to do anybody any good. I know there's a lot of programs out there.
Yeah.
But maybe we can put together resources for them and go talk to them. I don't know, I just feel like we, they're going to need some help.
I understand that there is talk at both in Boston and the Washington DC level of a pretty massive bill to address the economic damage and what that looks like. To a lot of the employee situation, it's probably going to be managing unemployment system like it's been done in the past. As it relates to business enterprises, though, I don't know what it looks like, but they're already lining up to have their two cents in as it relates to what a relief package would look like, and from what I understand, in communications down in Washington DC, what's been proposed to date from the House, they felt undershot the amount of money that's going to be needed on a national level, so.
The only problem is, while you're waiting for that money, you've got to pay your bills and you've got to eat, and you've got to put gas in the car.
If we could come up with a-
It's going to be very difficult.
A relief fund, or even something that they could pay back, I'm not sure. It would just be nice if we explored the opportunity or option that there might be something we can do.
You know, and even if, even though they can sell, you know, to-go orders, they're going to lose on the alcohol business that they would get if somebody was eating inside.
Yeah, no question.
There's a big markup on that, huh?
Permanent loss. You'll never recover that. Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe just, I know you have a lot to do, but something.
We'll take it under advisement.
I know.
I'm sure the Chamber of Commerce will come up with a few ideas, and I know the director's probably watching here tonight, so. But it's certainly something that, as it evolves, we'll see what happens.
You can organize a takeout party all over the Cape, except you can't have more than 25 in a group.
Well, I mean, even still, though, I mean, how many staff do you need to deliver food to the car?
Even the takeout-
It's tough, I mean, there's a lot of people on media, really in business, really complaining about it, like, what are we going to do? I mean, that's a serious blow to the restaurant business.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure that the takeout is even a realistic. People are so scared at this point.
Yeah.
They're not likely to accept paper goods and plastics across the counter, I mean-
You wanted me to sterilize the papers and pen when I gave you this.
And I don't think the takeout business would ever be able to replace even close to what's in a sit-down restaurant, so.
Brush your teeth with that, Norm?
He's very smart. He'll be the one that survives.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, so there's a script I sent out to everybody, yeah, no. So, so the health chairman and Bruce Murphy generated a script for a automated call for me. Norm has a copy of it. I haven't generated it yet, I just got the Word version of it myself tonight.
There's a typo.
Yeah, there's a typo where it says county, and it should say country.
Right. So I'll, I'll take any commentary that you might have related to that, and then put that together for dispensing tomorrow, so.
No poems?
No, I don't do poems.
Yeah, we should do a poem.
I'll be happy to hand over my comments, I just, I thought they were-
It's hard to rhyme with coronavirus. It's hard with the word. It's more like a haiku instead of a poem.
There you go.
So, yeah, so just, if you got something for me, I'll take a look at it, and I'll revise it appropriately, and we'll go from there, but.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we've got to be careful with, I mean, there's been a lot on the air today that, you know, that the interpretation of the advisories on the air are different from what we have in here, so we've got to be careful.
Yeah.
Well, what I think is, you can't, you can't override the state, obviously their directives take precedent. I think you can put something in that's more restrictive, but not less restrictive, so if they say groups of 25, and the local board says groups of 20, that's probably okay.
That's correct.
It's probably okay, but the locals can't say, no, you can go to 50.
No.
But, yeah, I, you know, I think to the extent that any local regulations are inconsistent with the state regulations, they're not, they're not valid.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about where we're talking, where we're advising people about different things to do to remain healthy.
Oh.
Yeah.
I also, I also thought there was talk earlier about family members being quarantined, and I think that there was an advisement today that that was a mandate, that if you had a family member, that, and I'm not sure that that reflects that.
No, it doesn't. You're talking on the roll call.
Right.
So we'll clean it up a little bit. I mean, I did double-check some stuff on the CDC website today, but any input you got now before it goes out, that would be greatly appreciated.
Well, our website, he said, is fairly up to date.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of good information on it.
Yeah, but it says on there, there's no cases that have been reported in Barnstable County, so that should be corrected.
No, that, that got updated already.
Did it? Is it today? It didn't say that.
Yeah, that was on, it was late this afternoon it got updated, yeah.
Yeah, I just think that, I think we need to make sure that people understand that it's, the information's constantly changing, so.
Some of our challenges, the information that gets out there sometimes is-
I'll tell you, I like Baker's press conference, I think he's clear, I really do, I think he's right to the point, he's very, very clear.
Who's Baker?
So I like listening to those, I come away thinking I don't really have a lot of questions, but, we'll be right. That's what I asked.
No, I'm, I'm-
You're okay for a motion to adjourn now?
Yep.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.